I know.
Thank you.
What is the way the thing is moving from the cold air?
Thanks very much.
Oh.
The way what's moving?
Of that screen, maybe that was not one of them.
I think so.
I apologize for a delayed start. I would like to at least acknowledge that we were all at the Jennifer Lynch Domestic Violence Vigil over by the Health Department, which it's fair to say was the best attended that I have attended, and also had three extraordinary outstanding essays on domestic violence written by Brookline High School students, each one approaching it from a slightly different angle, and each one as thoughtful and clearly written as one could possibly wish, and it was truly impressive to have those essays being read, but also written by the young women who wrote them. Having said that, yes?
Yes, well, I just want to add that our Norfolk County District Attorney joined us there.
That's right.
And I also really appreciated your comments, Chairman DeWitt, because I think that that is the messages that we all have to be on the lookout for any signs that someone we know, a neighbor or friend or family, might be the victim of some kind of abuse and make sure that they get to help. So I think that's, that was generally the theme of the evening.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would say from the comments in the essays, all were very clearly saying that particularly teenagers need to be educated and learn what domestic violence is, how to identify it, and how to say no, and also how to know where to go to get help. Anyway, moving on, the farmer's market will continue for four more weeks on Thursdays at, from 1:30 until sunset, in the Center Street West parking lot. Also on Thursday, and this is anticipating a later item on our calendar, at 5:30 PM at the Senior Center, 93 Winchester Street, there will be an educational forum on medical marijuana, featuring our Director of Health and Human Services, Dr. Alan Balsam, and Andy Epstein, who helped develop the State Department of Public Health regulations for registered marijuana dispensaries. This Saturday, there will be pop-up vendors at Two Brookline Place from noon until 5:00 PM. And also on Saturday, the Korean Cultural Festival will begin at 6:00 PM at the Korean Church of Boston, which is just next door here at 32 Harvard Street. It will feature children's activities, foodstake, food tastings, and delicious Korean food, I might add, and a concert of international music at 7:00 PM. Are there other announcements? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. I've got three quick announcements, three different events I went to in the last week. And the first is that on Friday evening, there was a reception for the three new art, temporary art installations in Town Hall, and I want to thank the artists responsible for that. Downstairs on the first floor, one room is a beautiful prints by Ed Stitt and by Brookline perennial artist and a perennial contributor, Barney Berliner, whose whimsical artworks can also be seen on the first floor. And right here in the Selectman's meeting room, we have some beautiful prints by Anita Jamison, and we thank all of those artists for lending us their works. The other two items are connected. The first was a dedication of the Down Under Yoga at the corner of Beacon Street and Carlton Street, which was Saturday morning. I gotta say, it was their first day open. They must have had over 100 people there, customers up and running already doing yoga. It was very impressive. Beautiful facility, great new addition to that, to that block of stores is going to increase the vibrancy of that block.
They were at Brookline Day handing out, yeah, cards or something.
From what I understand, they, a lot of very established yoga instructors came there immediately, bringing their, their clients with them.
Ah, okay.
So they were up and, up and running on the first day. And speaking of that block, there was also the, the day of the St. Mary's Block Party, and that looked to be a, I took a stroll through it, it was, it looked like a smashing success, lots of, lots of activity, lots of merchants out with, doing special things out on the street. I bought a pumpkin and a can of spackle myself.
Okay. Sounds productive. Any other events, comments from members of the board?
No, just, I'm, I'm happy to say my son got married this weekend.
Oh, yes.
We had a beautiful weekend in the Adirondacks, and it was, it was very nice.
Okay. Next item is public comment. Ms. Allen, would you like to come forward to the microphone?
Yes. Just wanted to congratulate you on your son getting married.
Thank you.
It's so exciting. Okay, I just want to just pass these around. They're a little stapler, but there you go. There's two sheets each, and I'll keep them for myself. I'll be very pleased. Yeah, thanks.
Susan Allen, precinct 13. I know that you have a hearing later on, a public hearing regarding the cameras, but I decided to speak at public comment because I'm concerned regarding a question of law, upholding the law in Brookline. My biggest concern is that it, I'm worried that we here in Brookline may be a bit naive about the potential dangers in accepting funding and working with Homeland Security. Now, if you look at page one, you'll see a picture of, of the chief, our well-meaning chief, who is and has been working with Homeland Security on some surveillance programs. But the concern is, I've researched this surveillance program, and they have, it's a program called Operation Urban Shield, and they were conducting an exercise that was, The Boston Globe described it as frighteningly similar on the same day that the Boston Marathon occurred. Now, that would be a coincidence if it weren't for all these other, Sandy Hook had a similar planning exercise on the same day. The Aurora Movie Theater, again, had a planning exercise on the same day. During 9/11, they had three or four different planning exercises occurring on the same day, and on page two, there's four or five more. I think that officials and public safety officers are required to take the oath of office for reason, and that is that they used to call it, the founders called it the sleuths of terror, using terrorist acts that the state was conducting in order to compromise our civil liberties. And so I just want to call your attention to four laws, and I'll leave this copy with the board. That Article 1, Section 9 says, "No money shall be drawn from the Treasury but in consequence of appropriations made by law." And Amendment 4, of course, requires that there be a warrant and, and there be probable cause before searches are made. The warrant and probable cause defines what a reasonable search is, probable cause of a crime. And Article 5 states that these laws are valid to all intents and purposes, and Article 6 requires that all state officials, local and at the state level, uphold these laws. You all took these oaths, and therefore, I feel that the, taking fingerprints without warrant of probable cause of a crime violates your oath to vote for that. And to vote for surveillance, again, without probable cause that a crime has been committed violates this oath. I would hope that you could take these concerns under advisement when you vote on these issues that are coming before you later this evening. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter, and here are the votes. I'm going to submit the laws with the same question, with a question, how are these laws consistent with the proposals in the warrant article to the legal department? And I've already submitted it to the Chief of Police. I'm, so I'm waiting for a reply from the Chief. I haven't submitted it to legal yet. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
We now will move to our miscellaneous items. The first has to do with minutes from September 24th and October 1st.
I did have some changes which I've given to Kate already.
Likewise, I did too.
They're probably all, maybe all the same ones, but then I will move that we approve the minutes from September 24th and October 1st as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
I will abstain on the 24th.
Right, because you weren't here?
On the, the other one.
October 1st.
October 1st.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, and the chair votes aye. And moving to the next item on the calendar, which is a proposal for Acres Terrace Reconstruction. Mr. Ditto?
This is a contract to reconstruct Acres Terrace, and for those who, you don't know where Acres Terrace is, it's an 18-foot wide way that's 519 feet long, and it's an entrance into Warren Playground off of Acres Street. And we opened bids, actually, we had to rebid this because the first round of bids was skewed. We didn't feel it was an accurate number, so we went out to bid again, and we had three low bidders, three, three bidders, the low bidder being AR Belly at $36,765. This project involves stripping the existing pavement, installing some drainage, and then resurfacing the, the way. AR Belly is working on Dean Road as we speak. He's, I think he's doing a good job out there, and I feel that he's qualified to do this project also. If this is awarded tonight, he will start next week.
Questions for Mr. Ditto? Yes, Selectman Goldstein?
Thanks. Mr. Ditto, this is a private way, I understand, and these abutters are paying for that, this project themselves? Is that?
Yes, we, we are an abutter also.
Yep.
And what we did is we divvied it, divvied it up based on the frontage of each one's lot.
So the town has a share of it based on its, its?
Yes, and, and the town's share is $19,242.93.
Just to clarify for my own edification, so is it, the only time we get involved in, in repaving or of a private way is when the town itself is in a butter?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm, so I was interested in that because I have a private way behind my house, and we paid for it to be repaved, and the town was in a butter, and I don't think we, I think we paid the town's share also. So, because we have a park up at the top of, Schick Park up at the top of the hill there, so that you're saying that we should have been asking the town to contribute for the, its portion that was near the park?
Before, don't, don't admit anything.
No.
On behalf of the town.
No, it's, it's long past.
There's probably a statute of limitations also.
No, you're safe now, but just next time it comes around, I want to make sure I've got it straight.
Yep.
And there are a number of other people that ask me this about private ways, too. So if the town is in a butter to some portion of it, they will contribute their share.
Their share, right.
So if the town's on one side and there are houses on the other side, you split that portion? How does that work?
Well, in this case here, the, the total contract was roughly $37,000, and we're paying just a little more than half.
Uh-huh.
And if you're familiar with Warren Playground, our frontage is over half the, the half the street, plus we turn the corner a little bit, so we're going to pay a little, about 55, 60%, which is what's here.
Well, you'll be happy to know if we ever repave that, that the town has much, much smaller percentage of ours. But, but I do get questions from people on the other private ways in town, which many, many people have these sort of alleys behind the houses where they park. And so you're saying that for the most part, unless the town owns property on there, they're going to have to expect to pay for it themselves?
Correct.
It, it may also, I think, depend on where the lot line falls, you know, where the property boundary is, and I suppose it's conceivable that you could have a, a boundary that falls in the middle of the private way.
Yeah.
Or you could have the town lot line being on the edge outside the private way, and yet still abutting, and there may be different consequences in either case.
And what about if, if there was a private way and the town was not in a butter, do you still help people get a contract, get a bid on it? Or you were just helping in this case because we were one of the abutters?
Yes. We were approached last summer by the abutters, saying the playground was being redesigned. They felt that, you know, they'd like to make it all nice. So they gave us a call, and they say, "How do we go about getting this repaved?" And I think at that mind, mindset, they were, they were thinking the town would, would do it all because we use that as, it is a major entrance to that part of the playground. So we met with the abutters out in the field and explained to them how we were going to proceed, and they were all fine with it.
Okay.
Selectman Daley, just, because I get that call a lot, too, about private ways and explaining it, and I've actually researched this. I had a call just last week, as a matter of fact. People should know that there is a procedure under Mass General laws that allows the, the parties benefited from a, a, what's called the proprietors of a, of a, of a private way to call for a meeting of all the, the other proprietors and assess against these proprietor an amount sufficient to maintain the way. And it's done, it involves the, either the clerk magistrate of the court or the, or the clerk of the town of Brookline. If anybody ever wants information about it, I'd be happy to, to refer them to the, to the correct statutory.
I actually would like to follow up on that out of curiosity, and either you or Mr. Ditto may have the answer, but it's my understanding that, and this came up in the development of, of the Olmsted Hill area, so my question is, if there's a private way, we still need to be able to provide access to fire vehicles, right?
That's correct.
And that means that if it's a totally private way with no public abutting properties, would the owner, abutters, need to come to the town in order to be sure that the way is maintained or, or is created if it's being repaved? Whatever is being done meets the standards for fire safety?
Yes, they would have to make sure that it is passable, both in physical and dimensional requirements.
Maybe we need some kind of permit?
I don't know. I'm asking, is there a permit of some sort, do you think?
For them to repair their own streets?
Well, for them to repair their own streets, no, but to be sure that if they wish to have a fire engine respond to a fire, that the vehicle can actually access the property. Some of these private ways are dead ends that I'm thinking about.
Right.
And I remember that in the planning process for Olmsted Hill, there is a private way there, although I think the town may have accepted it as a street.
Right.
But in the process of the discussion, the standard for that private way was that it should be sufficient to meet the requirements of a fire vehicle and, and have the ability to turn around.
Right. That, that would all be part of the process. They, they would have to come, you know, if you're looking to have a private way possibly accepted as a public way, they'd have to meet.
Ah, because in this case, it was going to be proposed to be accepted as a public way. Maybe that's the distinction.
We had that in mind as we were moving through.
I'm just thinking, Selectman Daley's private way probably is not, would not necessarily meet fire standards.
Yeah, I'd be willing to bet it wouldn't, it doesn't meet any, any of the standards that we have for a public way.
The town's garbage trucks do come through there and pick up, but.
Right.
Right. I haven't seen any big fire trucks back there.
Well, you probably don't want to. I was, I was really, I really had in mind kind of what Selectman Woschinski was saying, should there be a permit for something like that? Anyway. Okay, are there any other questions on this item?
I, I do have a question about a, not this item, but another item. We had a, a public hearing about the markings at the Horace James Circle, and I know that Mr. Papasturgen submitted a letter to the Department of Conservation and Recreation about that, and I'm wondering whether there's been any response to that letter to this point.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess just, I, I don't mean to belabor the point, but if, because it's hard for a neighborhood group to figure out how to go about this whole bidding process and everything. So is, would your office be able to give people advice if they?
Yep.
If they're trying to, if they're willing to put up the money and go forward as to how to go about it and who to?
Certainly.
Who to ask to?
Yeah, we'd, we'd offer.
Bid on it and that sort of thing?
We'd go out and do an assessment, give them an idea what is involved, what that value might be, and how they, and we would offer some contractors that we feel can do it.
Okay. Selectman Binka?
Yeah, just, there's an interesting question. When you have a private way where the town is not involved, whether it would be less expensive for the abutters to use the town's good offices, which, I don't know, in this case involved a public bid process and certain restrictions, or just to go to somebody privately to have it done? And I think that's something that people would probably have to balance. Obviously, the town knows its contractors, but on the other hand, there are certain standards and probably some extra expenses that apply to the public bid process.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, most neighborhood groups don't really know what kind of specifications you need to have in a contract.
Yeah, no, you're right.
For, for road paving, whereas you kind of have an idea if you're getting your house painted, what, what you expect, but you don't necessarily know that with road paving.
Right, no, that's, that's exactly right.
Okay. We're having a very interesting conversation, but can we focus on the item before us, which is, I think, without objection, I'm going to move that we award and execute contract number PW14-15 Acres Terrace Reconstruction, rebid in the amount of $36,765 to AR Belli Inc. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Ditto. We'll have you back for a long conversation next time. Next item is postponed, folks, just so that you know. Don't know why, but nonetheless. So then we have a proprietary vote for a Notifier Fire Alarm Panel Systems. I am interested in understanding what that means.
I can try to help, Madam Chairman.
Oh, yes, please.
Mr. Simmons is down at the Building Commission Meeting, and I told him that I would try it, and if it didn't work out, it'd send him up. But the, when we required to go out to bid under Chapter 30B, which is the state's Uniform Procurement, Competitive Procurement Act, if we want to specify a certain brand, if you will, of a product, it does require a formal vote of the Board of Selectmen. We do have a, a certain brand of fire alarm systems that we have begun to use. Now, there are many retailers of that or sellers of that, so we do still have a competitive environment, but it is a, it is a formal requirement of law that we have a formal vote, that there is a valid reason to have a proprietary system specified in the bid.
All right. So in fact, the named device is a Notifier?
Right.
That's the, that's the name of it, I see.
It's, it's, it would be akin to saying, instead of a four-door SUV, we want a Ford or something like that.
A Ford, okay, I got it, right. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I know, I know we've done this for, like, the security systems in our buildings or.
Correct.
So it doesn't say on this memo to us, but I'm assuming that we have the Notifier system.
Correct, that's why we're, that's why we're doing it.
At other locations, and that's why we're trying to standardize.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on this item? Then I move that we approve a proprietary vote for Notifier Fire Alarm Panel Systems in connection with fire alarm systems at fire stations number one and number four. And I assume that we will see the actual contract for this.
Correct.
It's in future time?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Then we have a series of grants. Chief O'Leary?
Good evening. Fortunately, the police department's here for a series of three grants that we're asking the board to accept, varying amounts. The first one is from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. It's an amount of $5,000, and it's for pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement and equipment grant. As you know, we've been putting a lot of effort into educating our bicyclists. We recently expanded this year to include the, the bike lanes so that the motors will know what to expect and what to do in the bike lanes. And this $5,000 would just allow us to get some more educational material that we can hand out to the people and take it to another level. I think it'd be a good thing if, if we can get it, and it can really help us in what we're trying to accomplish. The second one is a burn grant. It's a federal justice assistance grant. We, because of our population and our party crime rate, are eligible for this grant along with several other communities in Norfolk County. The amount they think that is on there for $70,939 is the total amount of the whole grant. That's not Brookline's share. Brookline's share that we're asking the board to accept on our behalf is $18,050.50. And that includes a 10% above our normal allotment because we have volunteered to be the administering agent for this grant over the life of the grant.
So as we vote, it will accept the full amount, but you will then reallocate to other communities? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
With the remaining, you know, minus the $18,050.50.
Right.
And we've been doing that a number of times in the past.
I'm, I'm just concerned that we vote, that we have the correct amount in the vote.
The correct amount for Brookline would be the $18,000.
$18,5050.
Yes. And that's how we did it in the past. We just would, even though we're the administering agents, the board would only vote the amount that Brookline got.
Okay. Then, members of the board, if you look in your calendar, you'll see that the vote, you need to change the number and put in $18,5050. Mm-hmm. And what technology is that going to be used for?
We're exploring the, we're exploring right now, best way to explain it. We do a lot of things by hand. Crime analysis does a lot of, weekly reports by hand. And we want to speed it up, and we want to do it, get more timely information out to the offices. So we've been exploring computer software programs that will automatically take the data from various computer systems that we have in the police station and put it all together as one report. So when people come to work, like myself, in the morning, we can have it right there instead of having to call for it. So it will just speed up the flow of information and probably help us as we reduce our crime rate, because people will know what's happened when they're off, and it'll be right there at their fingertips. And the program, the package that we're exploring is going to do that not only for operational, but also for our budget and things like that, that we can, it's going to help us along the way. And it'll free up some officer time, too, I think.
Okay. And then finally?
The fi, the final one is a grant in the amount of $1,500. We're one of the few departments that still do child car seat inspections. We do it several times a month where people can, we encourage a lot of people, residents of Brookline, to call. They can set up a, a time to come, and you usually do it up to DPW Building, especially this time of year when it's getting colder, up on Hammond Street, and we show them, we show them how to properly install a child car seat. If the people cannot afford it, we do have car seats on hand, of which is $1,500, will allow us to purchase more of them, and we will give it to them based on their need, just so that they, we can ensure the safety of the kids. So those are the three grants.
Okay. Questions for the chief on any of these?
No, I, I just want to say, as always, how proud I am of your department, that you have obviously an excellent success rate in finding and successfully applying for these grants, and it certainly helps with the budget process.
Thank you.
And I have a question about the pedestrian and bicycle safety grant. Not that I think this grant necessarily would be addressing this, but I would like to know if there are? if there are any sort of discussions going on about education in elementary schools, about bicycle safety, and particularly the question of who can and cannot ride on the sidewalk, and what the street markings are all about. I think there is a certain amount of, let's say, confusion on those areas.
I think it, I think you have a good idea. I think that our program probably needs a little bit of updating.
I can suggest a person we could talk to about it. Some of the school committee members might be very interested in this topic.
I think that's something, I know we do it. I don't know if that's specifically what we cover. I think we can make sure we do it. I think some adults could use that as well.
Didn't want to say that. But I do think in particular, because not only are we promoting bicycle usage in town, but there are more and more, I see them, family groups with little kids on bicycles, and obviously, we want them to learn about what the rules of the road are, but also what their, how to be safe when they're on their bicycles, so, anyway. Okay, then I move that we accept the following grants on behalf of the police department. The FY fourteen pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement and security grant, five thousand dollars, two thousand, is that two thousand and thirteen, actually?
Twenty fifteen.
Sorry.
Yeah, two thousand, two thousand and thirteen.
Well, I'm reading. Okay, two thousand and thirteen, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, in the amount of eighteen thousand fifty dollars and fifty cents. And finally, a two thousand and fourteen child passenger safety grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And then we have a batch of temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. Does anybody, the documentation is all in place, the police reports are in the file. Does anybody want to hold or discuss any of these, or can we just do them all as a group?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead. I move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with the following events on October twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and October nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Pierce School PTO in connection with a PTO adult-only event to be held, well, I don't have the date here, on October eighteenth. And finally, I move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with an event to be held on October nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And moving on, our next item is an update on plastic and polystyrene. Dr. Ballsome?
You're hiding. Are you looking for your guitar? I should say that Dr. Ballsome had his guitar at the domestic violence event earlier this evening.
Thank you all for coming. It was, it was very moving.
And, and thank you for your performance. It also was moving.
Thank you. So I'm Alan Ballsome, Public Health and Human Services, and I'm here tonight to provide an update to the board on the ban on plastic bags and polystyrene that the town meeting passed last year. Let me first acknowledge Andy, Art Andy Martineau from Economic Development, who's worked hand in glove with us on this initiative. And I think in general, I'm going to start with the easier one, which is the, believe it or not, it's the plastic bag ban. We began by doing a mailing last year after the town meeting vote to all of the licensees who might have permits with us to announce the ban. And this, of course, generated some press, so that was kind of the first time we did it. But the main thing was assembling a list of all businesses that might be affected. So we started with over six hundred and fifty businesses that were gleaned from the assessor's office, from Economic Development, and from our own files. We convened a group which included the planning department, public health folks, and what we did is individually went through this list of six hundred and fifty businesses to cull those that we knew were less than twenty-five hundred square feet, or that were food service operators with less than fifty percent of their business's takeout. So starting with six hundred and fifty, we worked our way down to about a hundred and seventy. At that point, during the summer, I co-drafted a letter with Kara Bruton and sent it out to those hundred and seventy businesses, reminding them that this was going to be taking place at the end of the year, providing them with a fact sheet about the ban, and also providing a survey, which could be either answered on Survey Monkey online, or it could be sent back or faxed back to us. And what we asked them was, if you have a business, is it less than twenty-five hundred square feet? If it is, then you are exempt from the ban. Or if you're a food business, is more than fifty percent of your business takeout? And if it's less than fifty percent, you're exempt from the ban. So we got that back, and we were down now to about a hundred and twenty businesses from a hundred and seventy. And then just three or four weeks ago, we sent out a second letter with a second survey, a second fact sheet, and we're now down to about ninety businesses that are going to be affected by the ban. And I suspect that probably fifteen or twenty of these are businesses who are just not paying attention. So our final N will likely be about seventy-five businesses.
I like the way you said in your letter to them that we're going to assume you're under the ban if you don't answer our survey.
Right, but you would think that that would provoke a response from some people. So where we are now is, we've reached out now to, among those ninety businesses, or what will ultimately probably be seventy-five, we've reached out to many, if not most, of these businesses. We're confident that the supermarkets, the chains, and the pharmacies are poised to comply on time to the ban. We expect there will be a few waiver requests, and these are folks who have a large inventory on hand, or there's some, maybe some judgment calls that I'll have to make. For example, let's say you're in the bagel business, and you package your bagels in plastic bags, but then after you do that, at the point of sale, you put it in a paper bag. Is that acceptable? So these are kind of the judgment calls that I'll be making over time about, since we know you can use a plastic bag to gather your vegetables at the grocery store, as long as it's not plastic on the, on the point of, of the checkout. So I guess what I'm saying on, on plastic bags, kind of to my surprise, this is going to go more smoothly than I expected, and there will be a handful probably of, of waiver requests, which I will grant for the six-month period, and then if necessary, I'll have a more rigorous process if people want to ban beyond, want to waiver beyond the six-month, six-month period. And I can stop now and talk about plastic bags and then go to polystyrene or do them both.
I actually do have a question.
Yes, of course.
Because I recall you were concerned earlier about the availability of biodegradable plastic bags as substitutes. Now, we know reusable bags are permitted, and we know paper bags would be permitted, but have we found a source for the marine biodegradable, which I gather is high enough standard?
No, none exists. None exists at this time. There is a Myrex bag that's produced by Metabolics that's in the pipeline, but it's not available at this time. But you can use a reusable plastic bag that's of a certain thickness, what is it?
Two and a quarter mil.
If it's two and a quarter millimeters in thickness, you can use that. And some, some firms probably will use that type for a plastic bag.
Because it's a heavier rather than a lighter type.
They consider it a reusable plastic bag.
Right.
But you're right, there is no, to the surprise of some of us, there is no marine biodegradable compostable plastic bag that meets the standard that was stipulated in the warrant article. There are in other countries bags that do meet other standards.
Right, and I guess my question to you, and I don't think you can answer it in a short answer, but would we be wise to consider possibly modifying this requirement if there are, I mean, it seems unfortunate, if not a little inconsistent, to have a requirement for something that doesn't exist.
Well, we hope that there will be an alternate bag available, and I think at that point, some businesses will go to that bag, and that'll be a good thing.
Okay, and just to get back to what you said about the plastic substitute bag, is there actual data that says that it's better to give out more heavier, thicker plastic bags than, what I understand is a type of plastic bag that is a very thin, I don't know how to describe it, very, very thin plastic bags, that are more easily, not composted, but just simply more easily recycled into other materials? I'm worried a little bit about getting caught here and doing something that might be worse than what we intended. It's a complicated question.
Well, you know, you have a good point, and there are often unintended consequences when things are done without looking at all of the ramifications. And in this case, I don't think all the ramifications were considered. On the other hand, this is a national movement to ban these lightweight plastic bags, and we're part of that movement now, and we're going to comply. And I think going forward, we're looking forward to the Myrex bag, which I think will replace some of the other bags that are being used after the ban.
Other questions for Mr. Ballsome?
Actually, a couple of comments. I think the reality is that the paper bags, which will get substituted certainly by some businesses under this bylaw, probably, or not probably, I think it's, it's been demonstrated that they cause their own form of environmental damage, including probably being a greater contributor to global warming than the thin plastic bags are. But town meeting voted the warrant article the way it voted the warrant article, and that's, that's the reality. I gather that the thick plastic bag will also be allowed under?
Yes.
The bylaw? And insofar as there are waivers that can be granted, those waivers, the way the bylaw was written, can apply only to food service establishments.
Correct.
So if there is a non-food service establishment that wants to continue using plastic bags, the thin plastic bags, they will not be able to after December first.
After December, they will officially not be able to, but it's not the position of the Department of Public Health to ruin people's businesses, and we'll work with people to make sure that they can comply with the ban, even if it's not exactly at the right time. So I'm not going to be putting people out of business or threatening them in any way, shape, or form. What we're interested in is compliance, and we will get there. I'm very optimistic about the plastic bag ban. I've got more questions about the polystyrene one, which I'll talk about in a second.
Really, I'm surprised.
Yeah, me too.
Selectman Daly?
Yeah, well, I used to, used to frequently visit a little town on the west coast of Ireland where they had outlawed bags of any sort, so they would not give you a paper bag either. And what they did, and it's interesting because this is exactly the same model that the giant Costco I sometimes go to in Dedham does, they have saved their boxes that they get goods delivered in, and they will give you one of those boxes, but there are no bags available.
Well, if you go, if you go to San Francisco, and you go to Macy's and you buy a pair of pants, as I did recently, they won't give you a plastic bag because they've banned plastic bags in San Francisco, and if you want a paper bag, you pay a dime. So I put it in my backpack.
Well, I was going to just suggest that you tell businesses that reusing the boxes is, you know, maybe a good way to kind of recycle some of their cardboard.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a special purchase for Dancing With The Stars performance there?
Well, yes, it's to keep my knee brace and my ankle brace.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Yeah, another model, which we didn't adopt, is in DC, District of Columbia, where every time you make a purchase, you can get a plastic bag or a paper bag, but it costs you a nickel.
Right, you have to pay for it.
And that nickel really causes you to think, because you don't, I don't, I just don't want to pay more taxes, so I think about it.
And I'm just going to observe that forty years ago, traveling in Europe, there was no such thing as a plastic bag or any bag whatsoever. And I still have a string bag, or two or three, that I was obliged to acquire in order to bring anything home with me, because there was, nobody offered me anything, either to be paid for, or, I mean, they didn't give it away, and it wasn't available for purchase. So times have changed.
So I, to summarize, I think we're going to, we're going to get there with the, the plastic bag ban. The polystyrene ban has proved a little more onerous.
Okay.
Unlike the plastic bag ban, which affects an N of seventy-five or eighty, here we're talking about the polystyrene bag, which, which affects three hundred and fifty-plus businesses. Every food service operator, anyone who has a food service permit is affected by this. We followed a similar outreach strategy, which is, when we put our permits out last year, we included information on the ban. And this summer, I sent out a letter, which you have in your packet, to every food service operator in town, you know, reminding them about the ban, along with a fact sheet, itemizing some of the alternatives that would be available for use. And of course, that was done with our economic development partners as well. One of the big concerns from, from the very beginning, you may recall, was packaging of meat, poultry, and fish in polystyrene containers in supermarkets and other venues. It turns out that, that's not going to be as big a problem as I had anticipated. All of the supermarkets, with the possible exception of one, have found an alternative product in order to package onsite their meat, poultry, and fish. And we're still working with one of the supermarkets, a smaller supermarket, to make sure they can find something that they consider suitable. But most of them have, have gotten there already. You probably remember in August, Dunkin' Donuts announced a new non-polystyrene cup. That created quite a sensation. I was asked to be on five TV shows because of that bloody cup. And they're still calling. So that, here's another example, okay? So a polystyrene cup, we can recycle that. I mean, we have styrofoam recycling here in town a couple of times a year. Turns out that the new Dunkin' Donuts cup is made of paper, but it has a plastic membrane. That's not recyclable. So again, the law of unintended consequences, but that being as it may, it's probably a better cup than the polystyrene cup, certainly in terms of its production. Duncan has called me in the last couple of weeks because they're concerned about the lid on the cup. They haven't found an alternative lid. And I'll be meeting with them next week. I expect them to ask for a waiver until they can find the appropriate lid for their new paper cup. And so the point is, I expect many requests for waivers for the polystyrene ban, and this has to do with the fact that they may have, businesses have large inventories of these polystyrene containers, they may not be able to find an appropriate replacement in time, and then, of course, cost. And I'll give you an example. Let's say you ran a psych hospital that happened to be in Brookline. You had a hundred patients there, you had a hundred and fifty staff there. You're not going to serve your meals on plates. Why? Because that could be used as a weapon or something like that. All your food goes out in polystyrene, three meals a day, plus snacks for two hundred and fifty people a day. Just think what your budget is for polystyrene. Then you look at replacing it with a product that's one and a half times as expensive, which it probably will be. Now, your budget's probably already in the can. If you operate like the town of Brookline, we do our budget in advance. So if somebody comes to me and says, you have to increase your budget one and a half times after my budget's already been approved, I'm not going to be able to do that. So I predict that there will be businesses like, like the psych hospitals and others that are going to, another example- are going to, another example is the senior center. We were over there the other day. They use polystyrene, but we couldn't find a number on it, so we don't know for sure what it was, and we have to go back to the manufacturer now to find out exactly what they're using, and the distributor, and the vendor, and see how it can be replaced. So it's complicated, and there's a lot of businesses involved, so I'm expecting that there's going to be many, not many, but some waiver requests, and my feeling is, I'll probably grant them for the first six months, and then require a more onerous process if they want it beyond that. We will be distributing more information over the next few weeks. We'll be having trainings at the end of October and during November on both of these issues, and that's where we are right now.
Okay, questions? Selectman Goldstein?
Well, comment and thank you. Thank you to everybody, Andy, too, for the hard work that's going into implementing this, and I think you've really taken the instructions of Town Meeting to heart, and really trying to accomplish what Town Meeting has instructed you to do, and I really appreciate that. I also appreciate that you're being liberal in your outlook for waivers, and I think what I'd like to suggest, though, is, in time for the spring Town Meeting, if you see a need to adjust the warrant article to, for some major classification of either of these warrant articles, please let us know in time, and please, let's get that paperwork going so that, you know, any solutions that can't be achieved in the next six months, and that we need to adjust the bylaw for, we can do that.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to observe that I think one of the challenges here is scale. City of San Francisco, large enough community that maybe even there are vendors who would create a product to meet their need. I don't know whether we could take advantage of that or not, but it's obvious to me that when you've got a large corporation like Dunkin' Donuts, basically, for all I know, they're going to be changing their cups in many locations, not just the town of Brookline. But you've got some small operators who don't have that scale of operations to be able to say, "Well, now I don't have to do this anymore. I can find a substitute," as you pointed out, "that may cost one and a half or two times what I have been spending for this product." It's a much bigger challenge, and could create what I would consider significant economic hardship, and I want to be, I want us to be aware of any of those situations if they come up.
Yes, thank you. That's very important to us as well.
Okay, final questions? Yes.
Well, I would just like to point out that the fireplace, for instance, has been a green restaurant for several years, and already switched all their products over when you get
And we're highlighting their vendors, as a matter of fact, in our fact sheet.
And with luck, this is not going to be more difficult. It will, over time, I'm sure, be possible to implement. I wasn't suggesting that we change our priorities here, but simply be, as we go forward, thoughtful about the impacts, especially on smaller businesses. Okay, do we have any more questions for Dr. Balsam? Well, thank you very much, and we really do appreciate the effort that's gone into this, and I should say thanks to Mr. Martineau and the Economic Development Department as well, for the thorough outreach that you've been doing, and we look forward to successful implementation and more updates to come.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, next item is fees for common victualers. Mr. Cronin. And I'm going to, just while he's coming forward, let everybody know that this is actually meant to be helpful in simplifying everybody's lives. Mr. Cronin, you have the microphone?
So along the same timelines as the Licensing Committee's been doing their work, we've looked at some of the fees associated with those licenses. A few months ago, this board approved changes to the lodging house licenses, and now we're asking you to adopt a very similar schedule for common victual licenses. Do you remember the lodging house licenses? When you came, if you were an applicant for license, and you got approved, you came to the selectman's office, and you paid three different fees. You paid a fee for the license, so to speak, then you paid an inspection fee for the building department, and then one for the fire department. However, health and police didn't charge, even though they were part of the inspection team. So what we did there was, we developed one fee structure to fully cover all of our costs. So we looked at common vics, and they were the same, well, very similar structure, where we had a base fee, call it, and then we had, the fire department had one fee that was totally different than what the building department had, and there was nothing from police. Fire has, health has their own fee structure, which is separate, totally separate from this. So what we did here was very simple. We basically rolled all those costs into one. So if, and when you come to the selectman's office now to apply for one, and if you get approved, you'd basically be getting, cutting one check to the town based upon the number of seats that you have. And I should mention that these haven't been changed since the early 1990s, when they were originally adopted. So we've got very old structure, not covering our costs. So what we've been able to do was wrap in three separate fees, and we also looked at the entertainment license, which, for reasons I don't understand, is a separate license, where if you want to play radio or TV in your establishment, you need to pay an additional fee for that. So what we did was, we wrapped it all into one. You still need to apply for that entertainment license, but there's no separate fee attached to it. So in terms of the revenue, it's, there's no loss, there's no gain. I was able to develop a formula that basically covered current revenue. And for the restaurants, as with anything, when you do something new after 20 or 30 years, there's some winners and some losers, but the dollar values aren't large in the big scheme of things. The average, about half of them would see an increase of about 75 bucks on average, and the rest would see a reduction of a similar amount. So some are going to win, some are going to lose, but in the aggregate, it's revenue neutral, and it simplifies a really awkward structure that we have, and we think that the business community, in this case, the restaurants, can appreciate it. It's one fee that they pay when they come to this office.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Cronin? Yes, Selectman Wyschinski?
Now, I notice that, excuse me, currently, if you're, if you have a very small restaurant of under 50, you'll pay 365 currently, if you combine all the fees.
Without the entertainment?
Yeah.
Without the entertainment?
But they usually have entertainment, I mean, nearly everybody has.
And then the entertainment brings it up to, how much is that?
490.
Oh, okay.
And to be fair, I, there may be establishments that don't have any entertainment, but I'm pretty sure 90% of them all do.
Okay, that was my question.
So, yeah, so my concern was, it was, we were wading it towards large restaurants, and kind of being the opposite of progressive.
Wasn't intended to be. In fact, I would have said the entertainment was a substantially greater burden on smaller operations.
Right, so when you add in the entertainment, we're reducing for small, and then raising slightly for large.
I mean, it is sort of nutty that we were charging one fee for radio and another fee for television, but who knows?
Right. That makes sense.
Yeah. Other questions? All right, then, are we prepared to adopt this fee schedule, folks? You feel comfortable going forward with this?
Is this, is this a hearing?
No, well, it really isn't. It really isn't a hearing. If you want to wait till after we do the hearing on the regulations and take a vote, that's fine with me. I don't have any problem with that.
I know that, I see Mr. Borowski.
There are some interested parties here, but I think they came because we're going to be looking at our common victular and alcoholic beverage regulations. But we can hold a vote. Want to wait till after that?
Sure.
Sure? Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you.
So we'll hold a vote on this, because our next item is a public hearing on regulations with regard to prepared foods, and also to sales of alcoholic beverages, and Associate Town Counsel Patty Correa will review with us the proposed changes in the language. Just briefly, I would say that most of the changes are what we would characterize as technical corrections, especially in the alcoholic beverage licensing, which we had just recently revised. But anyway, Ms. Correa, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, so we have a public hearing tonight on two items. The first is changes to the liquor regulations. We, as Chairman DeWitt said, in October of 2011, the board voted its current version of the regulations. Since then, there have been some legal changes that have occurred, and so the regulations markup that you have in your packets reflects some of those legal changes, reflects all of the legal changes that have occurred, to bring them up to date. It also reflects some policy changes that the Licensing Review Committee proposes to the board, based on recommendations from some of the code enforcement departments of the town, such as fire and police. And those include enhanced safe service of alcohol training requirements that are included in Sections A 27 and E 9 of the proposed regulations. At the suggestion of the fire department, the proposed draft requires crowd manager and crowd manager training, and that's in Sections A 28 and E 9 of the regulations. In Sections B 11 and E 2, the regulations propose to establish 10:00 AM as the earliest opening time for liquor sales by restaurants, which is intended to bring first service of alcohol into general operational requirements. Right now, we have some, we have had a practice of licensing alcohol sales to coincide with opening hours for the restaurant generally, and that can be very early at 8:00. So the proposal is to just to bring it to a more, to a later time that reflects more what the practices actually are in terms of alcohol sales. I also just want to point out that on October 7th, I circulated to the board a memo with a proposed edit to Sections A 1 and A 6 regarding sales of licenses and transfers of licenses. And those changes that I proposed were to address comments that were received from Attorney Adam Barnoski regarding the value that liquor licenses have come to have. Liquor licenses are sort of a peculiar animal in licensing. There is a section of the general laws, Section 23 of Massachusetts General Laws, which seems to say that these are not a property, but on the other, as to the licensing authority, authorities' relationship with the licensee, but at the same time, the cases do recognize sales of licenses and the value that licenses have. And of course, this is because of the quota system that is established by General Laws 138. They are a scarce commodity, especially in Brookline and some other communities. And so our attorney, Barnoski, suggested that we rethink the language in Sections A 6. And so what I propose to do is simply take out the language that was commented on, and instead, just add the language from Section 23 of Chapter 138, addressing the nature of a license, and just put that right into Section A 1, and then we can interpret that language based on case law, you know, as the need arises. So I recommend, and the Licensing Review Committee recommends, the draft of the markup that you have before you on the liquor regs with the change to A 1 and A 6 that I just talked about. You also have in front of you a brand-new set of proposed food sales regulations.
Ms. Correa, let's stop and just
Okay, sure.
...talk about liquor first, and then we'll move to the others, because they are pretty, each one of them has a lot of issues involved with it, and I think it'd be confusing. Can you just take a minute? Let's see if there are questions from members of the board. I can start with Selectman Daley.
Yeah, this is more of a comment. As I was reading through them, and I saw the references to the crowd manager, and then it says, at some point, it tells you to go look up state regulations if you think that this may be applicable to you. And I had trouble figuring out what a crowd manager was, and I think if you're handing this to non-lawyers and saying, "Oh, go look up an extensive set of state regulations on what a crowd manager is," I think you need to give them a little bit more of a clue whether this might apply to them, so that they shouldn't be worried about it and go look up those state regulations.
Okay.
There's not really a definite, much of a definition or anything in there about it.
The intent was that it applied to any restaurant that has a bar, a lounge area, and it, let's see, the language is in A 28.
Right, yeah, I saw that, but I even wondered, okay, if they're a pub, and they serve food, but, you know, does that mean it applies to them? They don't have a separate bar area, but kind of the whole establishment is a...
So in Brookline, we just, we have, all liquor licensees also serve food. So they're, in essence, restaurants, or they're in holders, or some other type of licensee. And so the intent was, I think the fire department felt that where you have a bar or lounge area, you're going to have crowds congregating and standing, and perhaps the chairman of the Licensing Review Committee can help us retread the thinking, but it was Chief Mark Jefferson who made this recommendation with the thought that where you have a bar or lounge, you're going to have people standing, you're going to have people congregating, and you could have a safety issue in the event of
Well, I don't have any problem with the regulation. I'm just saying, I think you need to define what a crowd manager is a little bit, and who needs to worry about that.
So it's any place with a bar or lounge, and perhaps I can look at the regulations and look at the, how it's defined, and perhaps flesh that out a little bit.
Yeah, but to be clear, the discussion around this all has to do with fire safety, and making sure that there are people who are trained to know where exits are, and in the case that there is a fire or an emergency, people can be guided to safe exits. So that's the nature of the crowd manager, and clearly, the argument behind this has to do with some of the disastrous examples that have occurred over time that people are aware of. I think the fire department feels that it's not, it's not an onerous additional responsibility for someone to be the designated person, to be sure that patrons, customers, know where a safe exit is, and, but they're charged with that responsibility. Now, we could do more to help explain that.
Yeah, because I actually didn't get that it was fire safety. I thought you were worried about bar brawls, or something like that.
I don't think so.
And so, you know, I just, I just think you need to flesh that out a little more so people understand.
This is really about emergency.
Yes, maybe that applies to me, and I need to find out more about this.
Okay, good comment. Yes, Selectman Wyschinski?
I'd like to talk a little about Section A 24 on Page 11, Identification Cards, where it's specifying what are the documents that are permitted as valid identification. So we're only permitted a Massachusetts motor license, not any other state, and a Massachusetts identification card, not an ID card from any other state, or a passport from the US government, or any valid passport issued by a government from a foreign country. So we'll accept the passport from Timbuktu, but we won't accept the pass, a license from New Hampshire?
I agree with you totally. This is absolutely drawn from the statute, so we don't have flexibility
So my nephew from New York, if he doesn't bring his passport, he's 23 years old, he can't get a drink here.
That's what the statute says. The statute says the registry. It says a license from the registry, and then it defines the registry to mean the motor, the Massachusetts motor vehicle's registry.
Or to put it another way, we are not responsible for what the legislature wrote into the statute. We just have to follow it.
This was pointed out, actually, this change to the Massachusetts, including Massachusetts before a motor vehicles license was pointed out by a member of the Licensing Review Committee who practices in the licensing area, and he pointed out
So are we, are we going to be in the business of pulling, of pulling liquor licenses because someone is accepting a New York driver's license?
I guess we determine how the enforcement goes, but that's how the statute is read. Yeah, that is how the statute reads.
We agree, Selectman Wyschinski, okay? There are certain things in here that we do not understand, but we are also doing our best to make our regulations our best to make our regulations compliant with statutes. Other questions on this licensing matter, the alcoholic licenses? No?
But you know, if we, if we left it with the original language, which just said a valid motor vehicle driver's license with photograph, it would actually be better.
It would subject a business to enforcement from the ABCC also.
Yeah, but we're the one who conducts the stings here. They also conduct stings.
Yeah, they do it.
It might, it actually might be misleading to suggest that if you just say a valid driver's license, that could include, clearly, by its terms, a valid New York license, which is not valid under state law. And, you know, we could, you know, if they're reading our regulations and relying on those, it could lead a licensee into a violation.
I think we should tell our state legislator that this one's kind of crazy.
How about, we are raising this matter because we are confused by it, and we hope that people who are in a position to address it will remember and think about it. I don't think we can resolve this at the moment, though, okay? I do think that's the only conspicuously odd thing, though, that we talked about, other than what, to me, is equally mystifying, which is the language of the statute defining a license as property and not property all at the same time. But then, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not expected to understand that.
I had, I had one other concern. I noticed in Section A 31 on cleanliness, refuse removal, we took, you took out a lot of language, and so now it says, "All license premises shall be maintained in a clean and sanitary condition." I like to have it in there that the refuse shall be kept in covered receptacles, and why was that, that stuff?
So that was deleted, just because now it's in the proposed food sales regulations.
We've got, we're assuming that any establishment selling alcohol is also, has a common victualer's license, and so rather than duplicate everything in both sets of regulations, it's meant to make it simpler.
We've never had common victualer regulations before, so now we're proposing to have them. So we just moved some items to that.
It is in common vic, and there are more common victualer licenses than there are alcoholic beverage licenses. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the matter of the proposed changes in liquor sale of alcoholic beverages? Mr. Barnoski, surprised?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Surprise.
Adam Barnoski with the Law Officer Robert Allen, 300 Washington Street here in Brookline Village. I do want to say thank you to Associate Town Council Correa for listening to some of the concerns that some of the licensees had, and, including some of our proposed changes in the regulations. I might be able to bring to the board a little bit of a clarification, I think, on A 24, the, which had to do with identification. I think the way that I was reading the language of the statute was to say that Massachusetts IDs are acceptable, liquor ID cards are acceptable, passports are acceptable, and then it's essentially silent as to out-of-state licenses, essentially saying, "Take it at your, at your own risk." You know, if you want to take a New York ID, be familiar with New York IDs, but if a sting is conducted, that does not indemnify you then, because you tracked a New York ID. So it allows it, but it puts the onus then on the licensee.
It says, "Licensees may accept as proof of age the following original documents only."
That's our...
That's, yes.
Maybe one of the things we could do is look at the word "only."
Right. That was going to be my suggestion, is I think that the way this is written now is it prohibits anyone from allowing that. So I think that that would be problematic, and I think licensees can take it upon themselves to determine whether or not they want to take that risk, and...
And given that the original language didn't have the word Massachusetts, so it was, originally, it said, "Valid document only, a valid motor vehicle license," without modifying it with the state.
Yeah, so I think, going back to the old language...
Or "take out only" for sure.
Well, I'd like to look at the statute again.
Yeah, this is, this is, you know, we're not going to vote these tonight, for sure. This is discussion. We're going to identify areas where we need to make corrections, and we'll definitely think about them.
I would, I would favor taking out "only," at least.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a one way of approaching it.
And we should consider taking out Massachusetts.
Yeah, yeah.
But consider it.
Okay.
And then, just, just a few more, a few more points. We actually are glad you touched upon the crowd manager. We wanted a little bit more clarification. From the way we were reading it, we thought it might need to be an additional, additional employee, but if I'm hearing you correctly...
We think it's anybody who's, who's a manager or an assistant manager.
So they could just be trained, but it wouldn't be at an additional cost to the licensee.
I don't think it even has to be a manager or assistant manager.
Well, it could be somebody else, but I'm...
Somebody with a certification.
Right.
You know, the crowd manager regulation is already part of the state law. It's, you know, we're just bringing it into our own regulations and extending it slightly to the, in terms of who it applies to, but it's, it's already there, and the regulations are pretty well-established.
Yeah, absolutely. And we just weren't sure whether, because we know that most restaurants have bars, we're restaurants first, bars second. If it's a small place with a bar, should someone still be designated? Just a little bit of clarification. I don't think there's any pushback on the regulation, just wanted to see if it applies to everyone.
I'll also add that the qualifications for it, the process for qualifying it, is not very onerous. It's, it's about a half-hour session on a computer.
Okay, great, thank you. There was just, just two other items that some of the licensees have brought up. One was a B 11 in regards to hours, bring the hours up to 10 a.m. There are some licensees that do currently have an 8 a.m. license during the week. These licenses, this time period is, is not utilized very often. One licensee brought up in a, when the Red Sox played in Japan, and the time was all flipped around, that people wanted to come in, and, and it was a great time to be able to utilize that, although it certainly isn't used very often. And I guess with the request being for, for licensees that are, currently have the 8 a.m. license, they could potentially be grandfathered in, to allow, you know, lack of a change there to the license that's currently held.
You don't get my vote on that one.
Chairman DeWitt?
Yes, Selectman Banker?
As, as I read the draft regulations, at least if I'm looking at the most recent version, there is a 10 a.m. cutoff, but the licensee can petition the board to serve it earlier than 10 a.m. on other days. This is in B 11, so...
Other than Sunday.
Other than Sunday. So, you know, if you have a situation where the Red Sox are playing in Japan, they can come into the board, but what you're asking for is basically any time, any day of the week, regardless of whether the Red Sox are paying, playing in Japan, they should continue to be able to sell at 8 a.m. And that is different from the special situation that you identified.
Absolutely, and I don't disagree. I think the issue is with some of the licensees that have the 8 a.m., who have had no problems with it, who have been responsible, businesses here, here in town, they're, they feel as though something's kind of being taken away from them, under their currently held licenses.
Are they, are they selling on a daily basis at 8 a.m.?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so some, I mean, in reality, nothing's being taken away from them.
The intention was just to standardize, not to, not to create a limit.
Certainly, certainly.
But it says, "Licensee may petition the board to sell earlier than 10 a.m. on days other than Sunday." So if they have previously petitioned us, and we've granted them an 8 o'clock time...
No, I think they've had 8 o'clock, our, as I understand it, our liquor licenses have tracked our CV times to now, so they haven't had to petition us.
Or, or they've been issued...
Well, when they come before us for their...
Under ABCC hours.
Yeah, but when they come before us to seek their license, they're petitioning us, I think, for, you know...
I think, unless I'm mistaken, what Mr. Barnoski is talking about is people who have licenses that were issued probably 20 years ago, that allowed an 8 a.m. serving, but, which get automatically renewed annually, and this will change that. Intentionally, I might add.
It's, it's kind of 601, half dozen of the other. It really is, we, because these people have petitioned, came before the board, they were approved, they have the 8 a.m. license, the idea that this will be taken away, but then they could still come back and ask for it. I know that, that Coolidge Corner Clubhouse has a 9 a.m. start time every Saturday. They do utilize that every Saturday, not during the week, but, you know, on Saturdays, they do use that. That's a regular course of their business, so it's just, as far as something being taken away, that's just one specific. I'm sure it happens elsewhere in town.
Okay, no, I, you know, they, they can ask whether, you know, at the time of license renewal, if they're looking, if in that example, they're looking for a 9 a.m. start on Saturday, this certainly allows them to petition for that, and it certainly allows anybody to petition for an 8 a.m. start for any special event, such as you indicated.
And just, just one last one, and this is certainly just a comment. I know where the board stands on it, you made mention of it earlier, but there has been some concern regarding the serve-safe requirement for all servers who are serving alcohol. There's just been some concern amongst some licensees regarding the high turnover rate amongst servers and the added cost to the business, especially those who are not having issues with underage consumption or sales, and that have in-house programs where they're teaching their own staff, and their managers are serve-safe-trained, and their bartenders are serve-safe-trained, and this is going to just create an added expense, which I just want to throw out to the board, and have that be something you consider during your deliberations.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, isn't the, you can get that tip, sir, serve-safe, by spending about a half-an-hour taking a test online?
That's correct. It's about a half-hour, I think it's $40 or $50 a head, and I think, in, certainly in some businesses in town, that that can add to a considerable expense over the course of a year with the amount of turnover of employees that you have, with, especially with servers. Managers stay on, bartenders stay on, but in the business servers, they come and go quite often.
Okay. Is that something that your committee...
I think I'd need to know much more about how often this would occur. Frankly, I think everybody needs to be tip-certified, and frankly, it's in the interest of the patrons and the customers for that to be done. So I don't feel very flexible about it, but others might.
We'd be happy, we'd be happy to provide maybe some statistics or facts as far as turnover goes to the board.
Yeah, I mean, if you could give us some clear information that would demonstrate, we could certainly take it into account.
Okay. That is all. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else here who wishes to speak on the subject of the language being proposed in the alcoholic beverage regulations? Okay, seeing none, then let's move on to food service. Ms. Correa.
Thank you. So you also have a new set of proposed regulations on food service. This would apply to restaurants, in holders, and food vendors. The regulations include lots of language that had been in the existing liquor regulations that's just been imported into new CV regulations. And also, the draft reflects some policy proposals by the Licensing Review Committee. Some examples of those are Section A 15 on Bring Your Own Bottle, BYOB. This is a provision that belongs in the CV regulations because liquor licensees cannot allow BYOB. So this would be a regulation that would apply to restaurants that are not licensed as, for liquor sales. The town, the default is that BYOB is permitted by law by restaurants who don't have liquor licenses, and we've never regulated it before. It's just been sort of the default position, and I don't think, I'm not aware that that many restaurants have offered this in the town. There has been talk of this increasingly, and Section A 15 is an effort by the Licensing Review Committee to provide some policy guidelines for restaurants to provide BYOB, such as measures that will assure compliance with state law regarding consumption by underage individuals and intoxicated individuals and so forth. Another policy proposal by the Licensing Review Committee is, regards, something that was offered, just for clarity, there's been a little bit of confusion about which establishments should be licensed as common victualers and which as food vendors, and so Sections B and C of these proposed regulations just sort of try to draw a bright-line test, where if there's any on-premises consumption of prepared food, that would be a common victualer or a restaurant, and if it's food preparation for off-premises consumption, that would be a food vendor. So that was just by way of clarification. The regulations also include the outdoor seating language that had been in the liquor regulations, and they make clear that the outdoor seating is for restaurants and in holders, and in Section C for food vendors, outdoor seating would be, could be permitted if the conditions comply with state plumbing code. And what that means is that a food vendor would have to have restaurant, restrooms available to patrons, or a waiver from the state plumbing code. So those are the ways that a food vendor would be able to offer outdoor seating compliant with, with the building code.
And our assumption on that one was that it would probably be seasonal, and there might be ways to provide accommodation.
Yes. The town bylaw, 8.10, does set a seasonal period for outdoor seating of April through October. On October 4th, I circulated a memo suggesting certain changes to the outdoor seating Section A 19, to propose an 11 p.m. closing time. There had been some complaints circulated about noise from late-night outdoor seating hours, and so this would just establish a practice of an 11 p.m. end time for outdoor seating. And also, the language proposes to move away from a DPW permit. Now that we're going to online renewals, what will, what we foresee happening is that the Selectman's Office will handle outside seating requests, and of course, DPW will vet the request and give a report, but there won't be any separate permit by DPW.
Right, and to be clear, there are some situations where outside seating is on private property, and there are other places, locations, where outside seating is in the public way.
And then I just want to propose one other small change to the, to the food regulations in Section A 5, deleting language that was also in the liquor regulations, that we were deleting from the liquor regulations, and, which would bring the language into conformity with how the lodging house regulations read, and that's simply to include only the first sentence, "No licensee may transfer to another person." That's the beginning of Section A 5. And just the last sentence, "Any such transfer shall be subject to the terms and conditions, etc." Just those two sentences, which is how the lodging house regulations read, and that would also eliminate any confusing language in Section A 5.
Okay, and, and this is, again, a reflection of the, let's say, possible misunderstanding about the fact that a license is granted by the licensing authority under state statute, the license is not private or public, it's not property, it's not real property, it is not owned by the license holder, and we're trying to be clear and consistent about that, notwithstanding that there is statutory language and also regular practice, which we do understand and would not wish to change, that the license is valued as an intangible piece of property? Hard to get around that, in any kind of business transaction with regard to a business being sold and a license being transferred. So there's this somewhat confusing area where the license is not owned, it is not real property, but it can be treated as an intangible asset to the business operator. So, other questions? Yes, Selectman Wischinski?
In the section on DYOB, which I'm interested in, why are we, as a matter of policy, prohibiting a corkage fee?
Because that's a sale. You cannot sell, otherwise it comes under ABCC. A corkage fee is sale.
I will, I will say...
That's actually ABCC.
Yeah, that's the view of the former general counsel, longtime general counsel Bill Kelly, who, his advice is that under the liquor laws, if there is no liquor license to sell, the proprietor needs to be hands-off.
I will say, I spent a lot of time on Martha's Vineyard in the summer, and some of the towns there are still dry, and so it's quite common for places to say you can bring your own, but I don't see, and frankly, some of them charge a really exorbitant corkage fee that's sort of somewhat annoying. But, you know, if it was just a couple of dollars or something, I mean, I don't see why anyone's going to have wine glasses and have corkscrews and everything available for you if they're not making any money off of it. So it's essentially, you're saying to people, you know, we really don't want to have BYOB, I think, by prohibiting the, any kind of corkage fee.
It may be that there are municipalities with regulations for BYOB, and you may be referring to that. I can't answer that question myself, but I would say, if there's to be a corkage fee, then the regulations would be different, and it would, in my view, have to be under our alcoholic beverage sales. That's what we've been advised, anyway.
I've certainly been in restaurants which are BYOB, and my experience is that, and certainly there are some in Cambridge, that are, there is no corkage fee. I mean, the majority of them, I think, do not, in my experience at least, do not charge a corkage fee. And I don't know whether that's because of this opinion from the ABCC's counsel, or former general counsel, or whether it's simply a business decision on their part.
That may be just the general Martha's Vineyard premium, then.
And I can imagine what it would be like on Nantucket.
But there are some municipalities that have, don't necessarily have alcoholic beverage, in other words, dry communities have BYOB regulations. So, it's complicated. Yes, Selectman Banka?
Just as long as we're talking about BYOB, A15A in the CV draft, the BYOB, is that language about valid identification, is that taken right out of the state statute?
I think it's exactly the same.
No, it doesn't have the word "only."
Yeah, and it's somewhat different. I'm wondering whether, if that's the state statutory language, we could take that language and plug it into the liquor license section.
I don't recall offhand how the statute reads, but I can look at that and come back for the vote.
Okay, because they are framed in somewhat different terms than the two.
Selectman Daley? Yeah, I was just concerned, I know up in the, in the, Section A3, you mentioned like charitable and nonprofit fundraisers.
You're in food or beverage?
I'm in food.
Okay.
I was concerned when we get back to, say, Sections B2 and B3, and also Section C2. I'm just worried about the PTO having the bake sale so the kids can go on a trip or something like that, and I think we ought to make it clear that those aren't covered under these regulations.
So it specifically exempts sales on a one-day basis or for special events that would not need a CV license, or food vendor license?
Yeah, the sentence you're referring to starts, "This requirement shall not apply."
Yeah, although it says they may need separate approval.
The farmer's market. That's the farmer's market.
Some events do go through the Selectman's Office for approval. I believe the Marathon vendors go through approval. Some events do.
I know Rotary gets a license for their little hamburger hot dog stand at the-
Comes from the Health Department. This may actually be one of the places where we have adopted some of the health department's practices. I don't know. Mr. Maloney, do you want to come up and help us here? Given that you're a contributor to this.
Pat Maloney, the chief inspector with the Health Department. Yeah, as a practice, we've always given allowance to charitable and nonprofit entities. However, because food is being consumed, we would exercise our authority as a board of health, and we would give a permit. So I think that's where the references were applicable. So they're not getting a license from the Board of Selectment, but they're getting a permit from the Health Department.
Right, so there's no food vendor requirement?
Okay, but I would like to see PTO bake sales specifically exempted. I don't think they should, that, you know, they're not going to be able to go even to the Health Department and get permits for a PTO bake sale.
No, we give them, we work with them, and we give them a little guide, and we function very well.
They do apply, and they do get them.
None of the ones I was involved in when my kids were in school ever got a permit or license or anything like that, and-
Well, we've been getting a little tighter on that because of the allergy issues and peanut issues.
Yeah, I was going to say, peanuts and things, there's a real good reason for doing this.
So they've been getting much better, but we work with them, and it works out. As a matter of fact, today, I had two PTOs. The Lincoln PTO is putting together their pumpkin festival. There's an ad for them in a couple of Sundays. So, yeah, we sanction that and give a permit, and we don't charge, because it's a nonprofit.
Okay, I don't know. I think that's pretty, I think that asking the eighth graders or something to go get a permit, to make brownies is kind of ridiculous.
It's probably not the eighth graders who go to get the permit, honestly. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Korea? So this, again, is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on the proposed language for food licensing? Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hands. We will not take a vote on these tonight. We will definitely take into account the comments that we've heard, and if there's anyone who would like to submit comments in writing, we would welcome those, and we'll put it on our calendar again, probably in two or three weeks, before we'll finally adopt these regulations. Now, having said that, we held back a vote on common victular fees in order to get this conversation and let people understand what we were doing with our common victular regulations. So I will then ask, is there anyone here who wishes to comment on our proposed consolidation of common victular fees? Seeing none, I think that's one we can vote.
Good.
So I move that we adopt the fee schedule for common victular licenses under the provisions of Mass. General Laws Chapter 46 and 22F, and the license fees will now be based on number of seats on the premises, including outdoor seating. For 1 to 50, the fee will be $445. 51 to 100 seats, $575. 101 to 200 seats, $700. And 201 or more, $765. These will be all comprehensive fees, including entertainment license fees. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we will move on to public hearing on warrant articles.
Do you need to do the food vendor license fee?
Oh, I thought we did, are there two separate ones? Oh, sorry, okay, we've got to do that. Thank you, Selectman Wyschinski. I move that we approve the food vendor license fee for, with no outdoor seats, to be $255. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyschinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. All right, warrant articles. The first three all have to do with licensing register, with registered marijuana dispensary conditions, and we'll start with article number five, which has to do with fingerprinting. Is the chief here? The chief was here. Where's the chief? Oh, there he is. Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Once again. This warrant article is proposed to simply update our current bylaw that we've been operating on since 2012. Just by way of history, in 2010, the state underwent a lot of changes to the criminal offender record information law. One of these changes was to take effect in May of 2012 that would allow municipalities, under the guidance of an acceptable bylaw, to conduct fingerprint-based background checks on applicants for certain licenses. In preparation of that, the police department and the town council's office put forth a proposed bylaw to the town meeting, and we identified several licensees, licensed applicants that we thought affected the public safety in town, and we wanted to see if we could do a more thorough background check on them. For instance, we asked for the ability to do a criminal background check into liquor licensees, their managers or alternate managers, hawkers and peddlers, taxi operators, door-to-door solicitors, second-hand dealers, automobile dealers, and at that point, the law was being changed and was going to require us to do a fingerprint-based background check on ice cream vendors. We took this proposal to the town meeting, and town meeting did vote it in. So with the possibility of a dispensary coming into Brookline, we thought it was prudent to add to the list of licensees that are going to be required to give fingerprints, and we're going to get a thorough background check based on their fingerprint records. This fingerprint record-based background check allows us to go outside the state. If we were to just get a query check, it's an in-state query check. We don't know what a person has done outside of Massachusetts, and it's not based on fingerprints. So this is, it's done based on fingerprints to be more secure, more accurate, and it'll allow us to actually check anywhere in the country where a person may have resided or may have been arrested or in trouble with the law. Under our policy, this light, this check that we do, if it comes back with a criminal record, that criminal record is not per se the reason to prohibit a person from becoming a licensee. That is one of a variety of sources of information that we use to do an appropriate background check. Also, if a criminal record does come back, we are required to sit down with the applicant. We are required to show the applicant a criminal check, and the applicant has an opportunity to discuss and to dispute the findings of the fingerprint-based check. Furthermore, there is a fee that comes with this. This fee is $30 that we have to pay for the state, and the board added an additional $20 for the work the police department has done up for a total of $50 for the fee. I should let you know that since this took effect in May of 2012, the police department has been checking its licensees in the categories that I mentioned earlier for licenses. Our policy has been accepted by the state. We were the first ones to get accepted, and we are doing our background checks to include these fingerprint checks as well. So that brings us to the addition of managers, liquor managers, alternate managers, and applicants for dispensary licenses.
Okay, can I just observe that the Department of Public Health Regulations explicitly permit, quote, "lawful local oversight and regulation that do not conflict or interfere with the operation of 105 CMR 725," which is the statute? So I'm assuming that the proposal for fingerprinting would fall underneath, under that permission?
Yes. I know that Patty has checked that.
Okay, I just want to make clear that we're not interfering unduly with these license or with these permitting matters, and we are following a procedure that is well-established for our liquor licensing.
That's right.
So, questions for the chief? Yes, Selectman Wyschinski?
So, if you do a fingerprint check, and let's say it comes back with a conviction for the distribution of marijuana in another state, it is a federal crime, so what do you do with that information?
We would go back to the state and the location where the person got arrested. We would have to get a copy of the police report, any accompanying documentation that they would have on how it all happened, the amounts, and then the person would be called in and would ask him to, Emma Hurd, to explain what happened, and then we'd make a decision and a recommendation to the board based on, based, impart on that.
It's going to be messy, okay? Other questions for the chief? Then, this is a public hearing on a warrant article. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment, speak in favor or in opposition to this proposal? Seeing and hearing none, let's move to the next item. Thank you, chief. This is a licensing framework for registered marijuana dispensaries. Ms. Korea?
Thank you. This is a proposal to establish a framework for a local licensing scheme for registered marijuana dispensaries. As Chairman DeWitt pointed out with respect to the fingerprinting warrant article, the DPH regulations specifically permit local oversight. And so, this is an enabling, this would be an enabling bylaw that would permit a series of regulations to be promulgated, and care would be taken to be sure that they would not conflict or interfere with DPH's regulating scheme. And importantly, this would also permit the town to conduct annual inspections of any registered marijuana dispensary in town, because DPH's regulations don't commit DPH to doing that, and so this could be a mechanism for the town to have oversight and be sure that the business is operating in conformity with law.
And to be clear, this again is consistent with our inspections for common victular license holders and alcoholic beverage license holders, and it would be done by the same enforcement groups, the town's code enforcement team. Questions for Ms. Korea? Okay. I was just pointing out that the expectation is that should this pass town meeting, it's enabling legislation, there would then need to be a next step, which would be to actually draft the regulations. So this is a bylaw that would enable us to draft regulations, but it does not contain the actual regulations. Yeah? Yes, I know. Planning to ask that question. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to having a licensing framework for registered marijuana dispensaries? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. The next item has to do with zoning, and Ms. Selko is going to explain to us. It seems to be possibly with visual aids.
That's correct.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Polly Selko. I'm the Assistant Director of Regulatory Planning. As you know, last May, a town meeting approved a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries, and that was in order to give the state time to finish their regulations so that our regulations could be consistent with theirs. During that time, since last May, the different town departments have been working together, planning, building- planning, building, health, and police. And they have crafted a zoning amendment, which I believe has many, many safeguards in it. First of all, the zoning amendment adopts the same terminology that the state has adopted. So we refer to them as registered marijuana dispensaries, or RMDs. And the warrant article would only allow these RMDs in business, office, or industrial districts outside a 500-foot buffer around K through 12 schools. An RMD would be prohibited in a building that has a daycare center, and it also would not be allowed to have an entrance that has direct access onto the street. There are also various submittal requirements that have to be made so that the contact names of all the owners and managers and people who work there will be known by the town, especially the police department. There's also a requirement for annual reporting back to the zoning, to the ZBA or...
Board of Appeals.
The Board of Appeals, thank you. On a yearly basis, however, the intention was that that, that the warrant article requiring the selectmen to license RMDs on an annual basis, that if that passes first at town meeting, then this annual checkup by the Board of Appeals would be deleted or eliminated. Both the planning department, the planning board, and the zoning bylaw committee believe that the appropriate buffer zone where these facilities should be prohibited is a 500-foot buffer zone around K through 12 schools. It's come up in the last few weeks, and several different committees have asked us what that would look like, where they would be allowed, and also what larger buffer zones would do, and also buffer zones that were around parks or daycares. So we have some visuals for you, plus there's a handout in front of you that also demonstrates the different areas. I just want to add that for parks, we have deleted passive parks where there are no playgrounds. For instance, St. Mark's Square is surrounded by three rows going all around it, has a few benches on it, but we didn't really feel that was a place where children were going to congregate. So let me show you some of these maps. This is a close-up because unfortunately with the maps, there's just so much information you can get on them. So this shows, gives an indication of the different areas on the map. Harvard Square being in Brookline Village, Coolidge Corner being our main business district, Washington Square. Here's Chestnut Hill and Potterham Circle. All of these locations would be available to an RMD locating there. But remember, it's by special permit, and so it's a case-by-case review by the Board of Appeals. This is the all-inclusive map, and it shows a 500-foot buffer zone around K-12 schools, and that's public and private schools, and also around parks with playgrounds.
Could I, could I just stop? Just one quick question. Looking at the 500-foot map, you are assuming, I think, the old Lincoln School as, you're treating that as a school?
Yes.
Okay.
So can you go back to the...
Actually, this, this map that you're looking at now is not what's being proposed because it includes parks.
Right, right.
Okay.
So if you were to go back to the first 500, which is the, which is, this is, this is what's proposed in the zoning.
Correct.
So they would be allowed in Coolidge Corner within that, within the unshaded area. So the black area, well, part of the black area would be allowed.
And the gray, the gray areas as well. The dark gray areas are the local business districts. The black areas...
I'm sorry. I don't, I don't think that this is what's being proposed in the zoning.
It's not. I said that. This is not what's being proposed in the zoning because we're not...
The zoning proposes a 500-foot buffer zone only around K to 12 schools. What you're seeing here is a blow-up of a 500-foot buffer zone around K to 12 schools and active parks.
Correct. Right.
This is just a blow-up.
And I'm sorry because I thought the first map was going to be just...
Yeah. What, what I wanted to get a sense of is what is being proposed, where are they allowed?
Right. I'm sorry. This is, this is it. We should have started with this. This is a 500-foot buffer map around K through 12 schools.
And is this the point where I can ask or raise the point that federal, if, if the feds allowed us to do this, they would require a 1,000-foot buffer?
No. Okay. Well, it is against federal law, but what we have...
Right. That's why I'm asking.
What we, what we have heard from some of the interested groups that are interested in perhaps starting an RMD is that in other states, there has been prosecution by the federal government where a facility is not within 1,000 feet of a school. But I've heard different things from different people, and that it may be because the locality actually complained to the federal government about it.
Okay.
Or it may be in states where there's not only the medical marijuana, but legal marijuana as well.
Thank you.
Could I? I'm sorry to interrupt you again, Polly. Actually, this map, I think, shows both 500 and 750. This actually overstates the areas that would be prohibited under the proposed zoning. This is an overlapping map?
It's supposed to be a 500-foot buffer.
If you look at the legend, yeah, it seems...
But we, we've got printed maps that are clearly different for 500 and 750, and that one covers the 750.
This is the 750.
Right.
Right. So that's not what's being proposed. There.
Yep.
You know, I know it's very hard when you, you don't put the, that's why I gave you the handout as well. So you could tear them apart and, and lay them out in front of you and compare all of them. That's the 750, that's 850, that's a 1,000-foot buffer zone.
I have to say, on the map I have in front of me, it's pretty clear that in order to accomplish those buffer zones, it was not easy to make them circular.
Well, that's, that's because there could be several...
I know, I know.
Overlapping circles.
No, I understand.
Right. And they're also from the closest corner of a property.
Right, 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 right.
You know, and these are drafts to give you an indication of what it would be like. I'm not saying, you know, we just haven't had enough time to give you, you know, an exact map, but these are pretty close to what we'd be allowing.
I think the, certainly the information that you've provided to us suggests that greater than 500 feet eliminates a substantial amount of possible locations.
That's correct.
And if you go to 1,000, it would be very difficult to find a place that you could locate one.
Right. You also have to overlay the zoning districts on this, so...
Right. Well, the zoning districts do show up. The ones that are not within the buffer zone are showing up. The black areas are general business zones, and the dark gray areas...
Gotcha.
Are local business zones.
Okay, thank you.
And the crosshatched areas, such as the one in the lower left-hand corner, are the industrial zones. Of course, that, I think that's the...
I, I think that the real takeaway from this is that if you go to 1,000-foot buffer, you eliminate many areas of town where you have a commercial area that, or industrial area, and you, you don't completely eliminate, but you do significantly reduce the potential areas where one of these dispensaries could locate. And that's, that's really what...
That's correct. And keep in mind that the dispensary has to be able to either buy a property or get a lease on a property, which may not be easy. Also, keep in mind that the Board of Appeals with a special permit criteria has to, has a whole list of criteria that they apply. They do not, just because it might be in an allowed area doesn't mean it has to be permitted.
Right, right.
I just wanted to add one more thing. The planning board did have its public hearing and did take a vote on this, and they had just one very small recommended change for the language in the zoning amendment. And that is in the purpose section of Section 4.12, where it talks about establishing, the purpose of this is to establish RMDs. They, they felt that word should be changed to the word "allow" because it's not really the town's purpose to establish them, it's really to allow them in appropriate areas.
And they voted?
They did vote. They, they voted, otherwise they voted the language in this...
But they voted the word "allow."
Yeah, I think it's a good change.
Yes, they did. Yeah.
Yeah, it's fairly appropriate.
Seems appropriate to me.
They, everything else is, they voted 500?
Everything else, that's correct. They did. And, you know, they felt very strongly about that, that, that that was the appropriate buffer zone.
Board questions on the proposed zoning amendment language?
Question.
Yes, Slachman Goldstein.
Polly, thanks for the presentation, and I, I got the, the part that you said about Section 5 being deleted if the, if the prior warrant article should pass. It seems to me, though, that there's more stuff earlier in it, too, that might also be redundant with a broader selectman licensing procedure.
I agree.
Like submitting the names and addresses and everything of every manager to the building department.
Right. And I discussed this with Selectman DeWitt earlier today, and the feeling is that once the regulations for licensing are adopted, that it may be appropriate at spring town meeting to actually eliminate anything that's duplicative.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And, and in fairness, I would argue that our situation at the moment is that we are better having the language in the zoning bylaw because that would allow us to proceed with, if there are approved entities, then we would be in a position to go forward without having licensing in place, whereas subsequently, then theoretically, we would have licensing in place, so...
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Slachman Daly?
Yeah, I think my question may be for Dr. Balsam, though, because I don't think it's really a zoning question, but does the, I, I don't, didn't see anything in this material we have. So is this covered under the state? There are state regulations now, are there?
Oh, there certainly are, and...
So is, is smoking allowed in these premises?
Which premises? No, absolutely not.
The dispensary?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
And by the way, I'd just say, having read these regulations several times, they're the most complete and most comprehensive regulations in the United States today.
The state ones?
State.
Okay. All right. If there are no more questions from members of the board, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment or speak either in favor or in opposition to this warrant article? Seeing none, unless we have other questions from members of the board, we'll move on. And we're obviously not taking a vote on these tonight, but we'll have it back before us in a couple of weeks.
Could I, could I make a, I'm actually surprised there aren't comments. The zoning bylaw committee considered this and considered the buffer zone very carefully. We actually had a nonprofit organization that was looking in town, at sites in town, for a registered...
Marijuana dispensary.
Marijuana dispensary. And it actually wanted a 1,000-foot buffer zone. It's the first time that I have heard somebody come in and ask for more regulation. Their reasoning was that they thought that the federal government was not, was using the 1,000-foot boundary as a, basically as a bright line to decide where to enforce and where not to enforce. We decided to go with the 500-foot boundary, or 500-foot buffer zone around schools for two reasons. Number one, the 1,000-foot buffer zone would, in many, if you, if you look at the maps, eliminate almost all potential locations within the town. And while some might feel that that's appropriate, this town voted to allow these dispensaries, voted for the resolution, state resolution that would allow these dispensaries. And the Attorney General has made clear that she would strike down any local regulations that effectively prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries. So reason number one was really looking at the reality of the situation. Reason number two is that I contacted the moderator, and the moderator indicated that he would allow an expansion of regulations from, say, 500, a 500-foot buffer zone to a 1,000-foot buffer zone as being within the scope of the article, but he would not allow a reduction from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. The reasoning being that we now allow no dispensaries at all, but if we used a 500-foot buffer zone going, and that's a complete prohibition, a 500-foot buffer zone would be a more liberal allowance than a 1,000-foot buffer zone would be. So 1,000 feet would be, it seems counterintuitive, but a 1,000-foot buffer zone would be between no dispensaries at all, the current situation, and the proposed 500-foot regulation, and therefore would be within the scope of the article. So because of that, we opted for, for the proposed article, the 500-foot zone, and it will be open to town meeting to extend that buffer zone should they choose. That would be within the scope of the article.
I believe we have a comment from the public. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. I'm Jim Siegel. I am a Needham resident, but I did go to Brookline High School and was in town meeting and served, represented the town in the state legislature before Frank for three terms. I represent NEDA, which is a nonprofit group that wishes to open up a medical marijuana dispensary in Brookline. And we have talked to most of the town, we've talked to planning, we've talked to police, we've talked to schools, we've talked to the town administrator about it, and we are in favor of the warrant article as drafted. Originally, we had looked at 1,000 foot, but since then, the Attorney General has come out with a letter that pretty much defers to reasonable state regulation. And the state regulations as drafted, say, 500 feet, and we're fully supportive of that.
Good. NEDA actually was before the zoning bylaw committee and urging the 1,000 feet. NEDA actually was before the zoning bylaw committee and urging the 1,000 feet.
But that was also before Eric Holder came out with the...
Good, good. Okay, okay. That simplifies matters.
So we are in favor of that and also in favor of the selectmen annual, of the selectmen review and not of the zoning Board of Appeals, which is also in the article.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you.
Selectman Washinsky?
I'll just raise a question on the L zoning district. I don't know how I feel about it, but I'm curious. I guess I'll direct it to Dick. Did the zoning bylaw committee talk about the L and why the L was included? Because the L is, you know, it's a different character than the Gs and the Os and the Is.
Right.
And for those of you out there who don't know what we're talking about, we're describing different types of business districts under our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, the L district tends to be, if you know where Kirkman's Market is, or the CVS right around the street here, Potterham Circle.
It's local business. It's zoned for local business.
Right. And they tend to be smaller buildings near residences.
Right. We did not, as far as I can recall, have any extensive discussion about that, but let me go back to my prior statement. I think eliminating the L district, going back to no in the L district, would be within the scope of the article?
Yeah.
And Polly, do you, I don't recall any discussion.
No, really, it didn't come up at the Planning Board's public hearing. I think people want to have enough of an area where you can discuss the appropriate business district site. And I agree with you, there's some L districts where it might not be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear in response to something Mr. Siegel just said. This proposal allows this by special permit in certain districts. There's no as-of right.
Exactly.
So you have to go before the Board of Appeals to get the special permit, and then you would come to the town, to the Board of Selectmen, to get your license.
Right.
That's correct.
And I was referring to the annual, after that, on an annual basis.
Right. What we understand is that because of timing, as much as anything else, initial applications will be considered under the zoning bylaw because the licensing regulations will not be in place yet. So, you know, it's partly to do with getting the timing right. Other questions, members of the board, comments? All right. We will not be voting this tonight, but we will take it up in the next two or three weeks. And moving on, our next warrant article is a resolution opposing police surveillance Are petitioners here? Oddly, I don't see any petitioners.
I don't see them here all night either.
Well, that's true. We didn't tell them a time, did we?
Yeah, it's eight o'clock, anytime.
Well, it's certainly well past time that they could have come forward. Well, in that case, maybe we'll...
I'm gonna look up in the hallway.
You could, but we can take up another item. We don't have to, I mean, we can hold this one for a moment.
I would note that some of the camera committee members are here.
Oh, I see the committee. No, 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 I see committee members, but we do need to hear from petitioners. I don't think we can just go to the other people.
Take your piece.
Yeah. Well, I'm proposing that we move to the next item. Petitioner's not there? Is there an advisory committee meeting going on that they might be attending?
I don't know.
Okay.
Want me to take a trip downstairs quick?
Well, we, I mean, then the question is, are we going to vote in Ken's absence?
Yeah, we can't do that. No? Okay. Well, all right.
You can do a public hearing on it.
We are having a public hearing on this warrant article, and I don't understand why the petitioners are not here, but is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this subject?
Yes.
Then we'll be happy to hear from you. Come over to the microphone and identify yourself.
Can I give you guys something?
Sure.
I haven't seen you on the left.
Welcome back.
How are you?
Thanks.
Chair, just before we begin, just to explain what the warrant article would do. It's warrant article 18, and it opposes police surveillance cameras funded by the Department of Homeland Security. And it's a resolution. It is the selectmen's decision whether to have these cameras or not to have these cameras. And this is a resolution urging the selectmen not to continue the use of the cameras.
And I believe, Mr. Crockford, you're speaking in support of the warrant article. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I hate to say it, but you are in lieu of the petitioners.
All right. Well, I hope I do well, then.
Well, what I would like the public to understand is that you're speaking in favor of the warrant article, and since we have no petitioners present, you're not speaking for them, but you're speaking in support of it. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Although I think one of the petitioners was Sarah Wunsch, who's a colleague of yours.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, Clint said he was going to be here tonight. I don't know where he is.
Okay, all right, fine. Go ahead.
Maybe someone came up. Thank you. My name is Kate Crockford. I work with the American Civil Liberties Union here in Boston. I first want to tell you all some pretty exciting news as far as we're concerned, which is that last night in the city of Cambridge, there was a meeting held on a very similar issue. I'm not sure how much, how familiar you all are with the debates and the conversations and the policy disagreements that we've had in both Brookline and Cambridge over the years about the Department of Homeland Security cameras. But in Cambridge, there was sort of a similar process to what's been going on here in Brookline over the past four years. And the issue has been raised again in light of the Boston Marathon attacks. Police throughout the state have been encouraging more surveillance on our public streets. And the Cambridge Police Department put forward a draft camera policy in the wake of decisions there that had... Oh, there he is. It's all right. Take a breath. It's okay. In the wake of decisions there made years ago to actually remove the cameras, the public body in Cambridge voted to remove the DHS cameras in 2009. The cameras were not removed above the wishes of the city government, but they haven't been turned on. And in recent months, the police have floated the idea of turning those cameras on. Last night, the Cambridge City Council voted on an order that would require the police department to get approval from the city council before turning the cameras on. So we consider that a victory. And I just wanted to let you all know that because I know that, you know, the direction that our society is headed in is definitely one of enhanced monitoring. I'm sure you all are aware of the revelations about the National Security Agency that have come out over the past, over the summer pertaining to the NSA, the military surveillance of every single person in this room. The U.S. government is spying on all of our phones as a matter of course. You know, these are not, these problems do not exist in a vacuum. And I just want to raise the context of these issues because, you know, I'm only 29 years old, and I remember a time when there was hardly any surveillance in public, when, you know, you went into a gas station and maybe there was a camera there, a closed-circuit camera, monitoring what's going on at the counter. But there were no surveillance cameras on public streets when I grew up. This is a relatively new phenomenon, and I just want to remind everyone of that because we can't live without surveillance cameras everywhere. We did for a long time.
The camera behind you is moving around as you, so it's a fitting...
You know, I just, I think that that context is important, only because, you know, in the wake of 9/11, there's been this real rush, which is primarily prompted by the federal government to fund the expansion of all sorts of surveillance technologies. I've been before this Board of Selectmen before on other issues related to the Department of Homeland Security funding surveillance in our local communities, the other issue related to automatic license plate readers. But, you know, the issue of surveillance cameras, I think, is actually critically important. A lot of people seem to think that the horse has left the barn on this issue, and I really disagree. I think that at the local level, we actually do have quite a bit of power to push back if we want to and to say that, in fact, we don't think that we need to be pervasively monitored by the government everywhere we go, 24 hours a day, even if there's no suspicion that we've committed any crime. In fact, you know, we at the ACLU, and I think a lot of Americans, believe that that runs contrary to what we as Americans hold dear in terms of our values and living in an open society where we are not suspected of being guilty until proven innocent. In fact, it's the opposite, or at least it used to be. And unfortunately, things are really changing in this country. And that's why I'm really actually honored and excited to be here again tonight before this body to ask you to think about the role that Brookline can play in terms of pushing back against that trend that seems like it's a wave that is, you know, flowing over our entire society, not just in the United States, but over the world, but that we as citizens and as engaged members of a society actually do have some degree of power to push back on. So having said that, and I'm sorry for a very long-winded introduction, I just want to say very quickly that surveillance cameras do not stop crime. There is a whole lot of evidence, and I outlined some of it in my written testimony. There's a lot of evidence to show that surveillance cameras are a slight deterrent effect when it comes to minor property crimes, you know, vandalism and things like that. There's hardly any evidence to suggest that surveillance cameras stop serious crimes like rapes or murders, and zero evidence to suggest that they stop terrorist attacks. Clearly, if someone's deranged and has, you know, in their head this idea that they're going to kill lots of innocent people, a camera's not going to stop them from doing that. Now, the chief and other proponents of surveillance, of increased surveillance, would say that surveillance cameras can have a really powerful effect in helping investigators solve crimes after the fact. Now, that is true in some cases. That's absolutely true. The problem, though, is that these proponents of more surveillance are really imagining a problem that doesn't exist. Take the Marathon bombing, for example. You know, we heard in the immediate aftermath of that attack that we need more surveillance, right? The Commissioner of the Boston Police Department, Ed Davis, said that we need drones in the sky above the Marathon next year. My question is, why? Because the police were able to identify their suspects almost immediately. In fact, recently, Ed Davis said that they found those people almost right away using the available camera footage. So I would just ask you to think about the number of cameras that exist already in the city of Brookline that are owned by private companies, by private individuals. And, you know, the chief himself has said that there, he has no problem getting footage from those private companies and private individuals if there's a crime in the vicinity of those cameras. There's no problem. So essentially, we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist by increasing the monitoring of public spaces in Brookline. There are plenty of surveillance cameras all up and down the areas in which these cameras exist, and there's a particular danger when we are talking about networked government cameras that potentially the federal government could have access to in, you know, in any kind of situation in which the federal government decides that it wants access, that potentially the city of Boston, the Boston Police Department, could have access to these cameras. I would remind you all that last fall, the ACLU of Massachusetts published a damning report about the Boston Police Department showing that it was spying on Veterans for Peace and Code Pink and other peace activists who were involved in no crimes whatsoever and writing intelligence reports about them, assigning them, you know, really derogatory labels like home sec threat and domestic extremist and things like this. So there is a real danger that when we have these networked systems that, again, are paid for by organizations like the Department of Homeland Security, which has routinely been found by Congress itself to be, let's just say, not so honest and maybe also not super interested in what's going on at the local level in terms of democracy, more just pushing its own agenda from the top, there's a real danger that these cameras could someday, soon, include technologies like face recognition so that any person who's walking down the street could be automatically identified by, you know, agents who are sitting in a dark room somewhere, maybe in Brookline, maybe in Washington, D.C. There's a real danger that these cameras can be networked so that a person could be tracked as they move, not simply throughout Brookline, but throughout the nine-city area that constitutes the Critical Incident Management System. So I would just say that we're really, you know, in the rush to monitor ordinary Brookline residents more than we already are monitored, we're really missing out on a few critical points. Again, one of which is that there's no evidence that cameras stop crime. And the second is that there are real and serious threats to our civil liberties and our privacy and the character of our open society when the government has networked monitoring systems like this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I just make one comment? The, as I understand it, in Cambridge, the city council made the decision that they had to approve the turning on of the cameras. In Brookline, our police chief, as you know, recognized the sensitivity of this issue and on his own initiative came to this board and asked us for our determination as to whether the cameras should be turned on, should not be turned on, and under what controls and conditions they should be turned on. And we, as a board, are already at that point, and we exercise and have actively exercised control over the cameras.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Crockford is aware of that because she participated in drafting those guidelines?
Yeah, but I, I mean, you know, what Cambridge has done, we did when this whole program started.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think, I'm thrilled by the opportunity that you all are granted right now to frankly make a statement to the entire nation, not just the state of Massachusetts, that we really don't need the Department of Homeland Security coming into our communities and flooding them with surveillance technology that really serves no, you know, provable and evidence-based public safety purpose. Ron Sullivan, who's the head of the Criminal Justice Center at Harvard and a law professor at the Law School, said something the other night in Cambridge that I think is really astute. He said that we shouldn't be making public policy decisions based on fearful anecdotes. We should look at hard evidence. And I think if you look at the hard evidence, you'll find that these cameras are not necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Richmond, do you have anything you want to add to that? That hasn't already been said? Please. Sorry.
I guess I'll, since you insist, Chair, Chairwoman, I'll speak. So, thank you. My name is Clint Richmond. I'm one of the petitioners of this warrant article. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6. I appreciate your holding this hearing, and I know it's been a long evening for you, and I wish I could do something about that, but I do have a couple of things to say. So here we are after almost five years, and we can talk about the evidence of benefits. And I still feel, as we contended at the beginning, that the benefits have been kind of minimal over a wide variety of purposes which have been proposed. The initial one we heard about was live monitoring, which actually, I'm still curious about that because live monitoring of evacuation routes, which I remember you, Selectwoman DeWitt, saying that was something you had some experience with. I think you had a daughter or something that was involved, Katrina. But it doesn't require storing of images. So I was wondering why that was one of the features of the system from the beginning. We can monitor...
As you know, we do not store them. We do actually only hold them for 14 days.
Right, but you don't need any storage at all if you're monitoring a live evacuation system, I mean, evacuation route. You don't want to go back and look at old footage of snowstorms or floods or whatever. So it could create a suspicion right away about, you know, sort of what was the range of purposes that were going to, these cameras were going to be used for. So I guess, I mean, one thing, if the main purpose or the only purpose, as far as DHS was concerned, was live monitoring evacuation route, I don't know why they provided us with image storing, frankly. Anyway, we, you know, we've heard about a few crimes where the cameras have played a role, as the previous speaker says, my colleague, that, you know, private cameras have been useful in many other cases, as well as other public cameras, whether they're the cameras at the Brooklyn Housing Authority that haven't received as much publicity, but the veterans' housing on Egmont, the two on High Street, all have a certain level of surveillance cameras on those premises. And they're not subject, for example, to our policies. You know, we've heard about traffic monitoring, vehicle accidents, but these are not the serious Part A crimes, which we've talked about from time to time in these hearings. In 2010, I believe, there were two Part A crimes out of the roughly 1,000 that occurred. So it's only 0.2% of these serious crimes. So to sort of elevate these handful of crimes over the five years as being one of the main benefits of this system seems to be overstating its benefits. Another thing that I didn't talk about in the, that isn't talked about in the warrant article, which I'm sure you've already memorized by now, they're not a completely reliable system in the components break, software needs... in that components break, software needs updating. For example, video footage was not available for four out of the 29 requests in the second half of 2010, as was reported to the Oversight Committee. Furthermore, these cameras are directional and cannot see everywhere. So, you know, you say, okay, yeah, we've got a camera at Coolidge Corner, we can feel safe. Well, no, it's only if you happen to be, you know, in the line of view of the camera. So again, I think we're sort of overstating the feeling of security that some people, you know, I acknowledge that they feel better with the cameras. We heard it at the subcommittee hearing last week. As we've said, though, the main issue is that we feel it's a civil rights issue and that it's really not about how many people think the cameras are benefiting in terms of helping with crimes or not. It's that we're changing the nature of our society. As we said, we didn't have these when we were growing up, even recently. And as they become cheaper, we're going to see more of them, as we have with private cameras. And as we've also heard from the chief, that, you know, he's been able to make use of some of these private cameras, whether it's at Dexter Park or Honest Tacaria or the Brook House. I mean, they're all over the place. You can see them. And a lot of these are cameras that can tilt and zoom. Some are the old-fashioned kind of rifle-barrel type camera, which, you know, you can't control And as I've said before, and the other thing about it is, actually, I heard my pastor actually speaking about surveillance the other day, and he was, his thought about surveillance was that it's really changing what it means to be human, to be sort of under continuous surveillance, and that he found that troubling. We know there's no expectation of privacy in public places, but that does not mean we want or expect continuous surveillance. In fact, some people call the situation that's happening out forced exposure, so that if you go up to Coolidge Corner, you said you know you're going to be on surveillance cameras. That's very different than saying, oh, you know, I know that if my friends see me or something, they'll tell me.
Mr. Richmond, you do know that the cameras do not function during daytime?
Correct, but I also-
Okay, well, I believe, I really take issue with the statement you just made.
Well, one of the reasons we brought this warrant article is because you and the Oversight Committee are proposing 24 hours again. And in 2009, before we changed the rule, the cameras were on 24 hours a day. So we have had experience with this. And this is one of the reasons why we think they need to be removed, because everyone keeps seeing, well, as long as they're up, let's turn them on.
I don't think anyone on this board has proposed the 24-hour.
Absolutely not.
I understood that you had said that at an Oversight Committee.
Well, we are not at the Oversight Committee. Were any one of us at the Oversight Committee?
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
No, have you attended Oversight? You've attended Oversight?
I certainly didn't attend any recent one where you seem to be quoting us as saying we've proposed something, which simply is not the fact.
All right, I'll correct that then.
If you've been to a meeting where you heard one of us propose it, I don't think you have.
No, I understood that this happened at a meeting that I did not attend.
Okay, well, then I would urge you to be careful what you quote, because we didn't.
May I ask if you're in favor of 24-hour surveillance?
I'm not going to comment on that.
Anyway, this is not about someone putting up a video of you picking your nose in public, as some have suggested. It's really about more serious matters that sometimes may leak kind of into the public space, whether it's arguing with your girlfriend, political protests, which is one of the reasons we decided to turn it off during the day, accidents like falls, emergencies like epileptic seizures. It's about being able to take a certain amount of risk in public or to have an accident and the right to be left alone when that happens. Anyway, that's mainly what I wanted to say. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Members, have any questions for Mr. Richmond?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Come forward and identify yourself, please.
Hello, I'm Lisa Wickman. I'm a resident of Brookline. I live in the Coolidge Corner area. And like my two predecessors, I disagree with discontinuing the cameras and the surveillance. I feel that since I've lived in this town, in this area, for nine years, it has changed. There is a lot of crime. I don't have any data. I feel much safer knowing the cameras are on. I don't mind them being on. Very often, I hear, at least once a year, a woman being attacked, and our police are able to find the attacker, whether they use cameras or not. So if our police feel that they need cameras, I want to speak out in favor of them and support them. Recently, three weeks ago, I pulled up my kitchen shade, and there was a homeless man on my patio, and I called the police early in the morning, and right away they came. He went down to Beacon Street, and the police found him. And so I respect the work of the police. I appreciate the Brookline police, and I don't mind the cameras being on, and I would like to voice my opinion in that matter.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Hello, my name is Cheryl Steves, and I'm here in support of the cameras. I wouldn't mind if the cameras were on 24 hours. I feel that it is worth it if we are able to get a rapist off the streets and keep them from raping somebody else because we were able to find them because of a camera or someone who built a bomb or someone who's exposing themselves to children in the library. If these cameras are helping us take these people off of our streets, that makes me feel safer and more comfortable, and I completely support the police department and the use of the surveillance.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to comment?
My name is Sam Katz. I'm a resident of the Washington Square area. I'm in favor of the cameras. I would be in favor of them going to 24 hours a day. I think that there's enough stories in the Boston area of hit-and-run accidents, pedestrians injured or killed, bicyclists injured or killed, that the area would justify high-resolution cameras that would have the ability to identify even license plates of cars that were involved in these accidents that tried to get away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, come on over.
I'm Chris McCardle. I live near the high school. I'm also speaking in favor of the cameras. I'm a cyclist as well as a driver. I would really like to have people aware that there are cameras there. I think that we would not be blocking the intersections nearly as much. I'm certainly in favor of them 24/7. I find myself on the other side to most of the friends that I'm usually on the same side of an argument, but I don't feel my civil liberties are being infringed. I think that what happens in public is public. If I want to protest something politically, I'm really happy. The more people that see me out there protesting, the happier I will be. My daughter was just involved. A year ago, a car pulled over, a man got out and hit her companion, and this was just over the border from Brookline. There was no camera, no record. It would have been very helpful. So I think also that small numbers of bad crimes are still bad crimes. I don't quite understand the logic. If we only have a few bad crimes, we don't need the cameras. So anyway, I would support them 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name is Jack Calvin. I live on He Street in Brookline. I'm a member of MRC, a SIR team, and also I serve as the Disaster Feeding Manager of the American Red Cross. On Marathon Day, I was stationed at the medical tent in front of Trader Joe's in Coolidge Corner. And as you can imagine, there was much inability, anyone, to know what was going on after 10 minutes of 3:00 that afternoon. The Brookline police were terrific because we had so many runners, I think between St. Paul Street and probably Washington Square, there must have been 20, 30,000 spectators, all kinds of rumors and things going on, cell phones not operating, et cetera. I think those cameras helped the Brookline police maintain control. We were able to get runners that were stranded, get them into a local shelter at the temple, and able to do a lot of things. That evening, I had a function as feeding manager as an incident command center in Boston, feeding 350 FBI, ATF, state police, CIA, et cetera. And I was there from 11 o'clock at night till about 3:00 in the morning. And when you saw what those people had and had to work with, there were literally thousands of cellphone cameras, information they had, how they, this thing that, well, they found them quickly, as a gentleman just said earlier. It wasn't quickly, it was incredible amount of work. And everyone's giving it the Lord and tail, the cameras were the major incident, they were key, obviously. But when we want to say that privacy and all this stuff, when everyone has a cellphone, almost everyone has two forms of cameras if they have an iPad and a cellphone today. But that's how we're able to solve that, and I think the cameras were a great help. They're on major thoroughfares, they're not in your backyard, they're not looking in your window, and I would certainly support having them available 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment person, next person to comment?
Thank you, Ian Pollenbaum, Town Meeting, Precinct 6, also a member of the Oversight Committee. I stood at this podium late last year, told you that I would be in favor of 24/7 operation. You still saw fit to appoint me to the committee. Doesn't mean that you've taken a position on that issue yet. What Ms. Crockford presented to you includes some pretty scary stuff, and I don't say that derisively or sarcastically at all. People have plenty of reasons to be concerned about government intrusions and things that particularly the federal government is doing that we don't even know fully or understand. I do wonder about the disconnect. It has to be a disconnect for any progressive to argue that these government intrusions are so awful and minimize or ignore what corporations do, what private companies do to monitor their own customers, employees, everybody else with no regulation whatsoever. And you compare that to these cameras that Brookline has, which I think may be the most regulated video cameras in the world. So there is some fear behind this warrant article. And we in Town Meeting and you and the Selectmen can either ride that wave of fear and say we're taking a stand, we're sticking the thumb in the eye of the government, or we can watch what happens to that wave of fear. I suggest that if you watch it, you'll see it break up against some big rocks known as facts. You heard no actual current facts or even plausibly foreseeable ones as to dangers to liberty and privacy posed specifically by these cameras. If you want to oppose them based on what they symbolize or represent in terms of taking a stand and putting ourselves on the map nationally, you need to weigh that against what they do or don't do for the town. And there are a lot of the same kind of extreme general statements in the warrant article explanation that's going to go before Town Meeting. There's so many of them that it's like whack-a-mole trying to hit them off. You will hear from the chief tonight, I hope. You will hear that our police department runs these devices, as you know. It's not the NSA, it's not any other part of Homeland Security. The video isn't streamed to them, it's not networked to anybody. There are instances such as major events where other agencies can come and watch. Our police department doesn't send it to be hidden away in a spy database somewhere. It's kept for only two weeks, which the town is violating the state public records law every day by purging them after two weeks rather than a month. Our police department has to control access to the system, has to control logons, have to document every request and the purpose for every request, and has to report all this twice a year, in very detailed reports to the Oversight Committee and to you and to the public. So you have lots of facts and lots of numbers, and the numbers come from the police department, the requests broken down by type of case, some major investigations, as you all know, were helped. And however people want to minimize that case, people hate when we bring up that Coolidge Corner kidnapping and rape by multiple offenders. But video cameras made that case and got those people off the street, and I don't have to refer to them as alleged offenders because they pleaded guilty, they admitted it. Many so-called minor matters, trivial matters, motor vehicle crashes, fender benders, hit and runs. I say so-called minor because they're not minor at all to the people, a lot of whom live in the town and elect us, who are affected. The chief also elected to give you numbers of what's referred to as missed incidents from when the cameras were off during the day. And I admit, that's hypothetical, you know, what could have happened if they were on, but I suggest it's a reality-based hypothetical. It's not a this might be used for this someday, it's something happened at this spot, could camera footage from that place maybe have helped. Most of all, you have one really colossal number, which is zero. That's the number of times that anybody has even alleged, let alone documented, misuse of the cameras that the police department operates under your supervision. Zero. That's one of the things that's changed in the last five years, is now you have a factual record to go on. You have a factual record of when they helped, you have a factual record of when they didn't help, you have a factual record of the number of alleged or documented abuses, which is zero, which is, by the way, zero is also the number of even alleged abuses at the MBTA. Thousands of cameras that they use every day for anything from robberies to lost children to medical emergencies to mechanical failures to accusations of misconduct by MBTA employees. All those things going on. We're not saying make Brookline like the tea and put a camera everywhere, but no specific instances of abuse. Same story with the Boston Police Department, 130 cameras or so run by local police under the same federal grant program that Brookline uses. No allegations of misuse. Same at the Boston Housing Authority with 230 cameras, and by all accounts over there, the tenants clamoring for more. That building has a camera in the courtyard, why can't we? Those are the kinds of things that they're hearing. And are we so special and different in Brookline because we have fewer crimes and probably more advanced degrees? I suggest that's kind of an arrogant notion that we're in this special bubble that's different wherever else. Cameras are an easy symbolic target. You need to ask yourself, and Town Meeting will need to ask ourselves, what does the town gain by shutting them off? And what would the town lose? And I'd ask you to look at the town, as I know you do, as a place where our constituents live and raise kids and, in many cases, work. It's not just a front in the world with Big Brother. So when what happens in Cambridge is thought of as exciting news, I guess it is exciting news to anybody who doesn't like the concept of cameras that can record what's going on. And those feelings are perfectly understandable and respectable. My point is not to belittle any of that, it's to ask you how much of that translates to what's really before you. If Cambridge, which has a lot more crime than we do and only six cameras, and they're not even running, wants to keep them off, then they can be pure about this, and I'd urge you to be practical. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, my name is Howard Hekt. I live at 92 Winthrop Road. I've been in Brookline and Washington Square for the last 13 years or so. I am speaking against warrant article 18, and I'm going to tell you some of the reasons I'm speaking against it and some of the reasons that I'm actually in favor of 24/7 and, in fact, increasing the cameras. I have a background in the security field in IT system security audit and compliance. And I've read my fair share of policies, IT system security policies, things that govern things like video surveillance- things like video surveillance footage, data, video footage, et cetera. And the policy that was put together that governed these cameras, that the Oversight Committee has to live by, is one of the best policies I've written, sorry, that I've seen written in relation to this type of thing. So I believe the selectmen were responsible for putting that policy in place, and I'd like to thank you for doing so. One of the reasons I'm opposed to the Warren Article is because when I read it, it's full of hypotheticals. It's full of hypotheticals that might happen, that haven't happened, and as some of the prior speakers have mentioned, there have been absolutely zero incidents or alleged incidents of misuse of the cameras. And if that changes, I know that I can come forward at some other point and speak in favor of such a Warren Article. But that's not the case now. And the reason that I'm not speaking opposed, the reason that I am opposed to the Warren Article, and the reason that I'm in favor of the cameras, is because we've heard time and time again that they actually have helped the police force substantially and specifically in a lot of different instances. I've heard various members of the police refer to them as a critical tool to do their job. In the Public Safety Committee meeting last week, I heard that again and again and again. It was a common theme. And I don't know about you, but I'm not in favor of removing the tools that help our public officials do their job. I trust the various committees and the selectmen to do the right thing when it comes to the cameras and the Warren Article, and hope that you oppose it too. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm Amy Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12, and a member of the Advisory Committee. I wanted to pop up, I'm sorry I didn't get here earlier, to hear all of the comments about this. I am absolutely 100% in favor of the Warren Article. I don't think it would even be before you if it weren't for the fact that even though the cameras weren't removed four years ago, you know, and there was a compromise everybody seemed to be living with, you know, for better, for worse. I don't love it, I'd just as soon see them gone altogether. I don't feel like they make us any safer. I think they're, you know, whether or not they're a tool for the police department, they have lots of tools, this is one they've functioned without in the past and one I think they can function without now. And, you know, because this slope is very slippery and slick and we head down it fast, you know, I didn't hear Cade's comments, but it sounded like, as I came in at the tail end of Mr. Pollenbaum's comments, that, you know, there were some hypotheticals given there. And I think that goes, you know, that goes both ways. So the fear argument cuts both ways on that one. And I think looking at it a little bit more practically, if you can in this, because people tend to feel very emotionally both ways if they choose to think about it, is important because I don't think it's either you're pro-police, pro-cameras, or anti-police, anti-cameras. I think the two can coexist. I think with the cameras now, because they're open, you know, because they can close, it's okay. It's not great. Even the thought of 24/7 or more cameras and this slow sleepwalk to this surveillance state, it's not that we think that Chief, I think that Chief O'Leary is doing anything wrong with the cameras or that there's something, you know, clandestine planned in the future. But quite truthfully, unless you completely stick your head in the sand, I mean, the technology is there. Even with a very, you know, with a fairly liberal administration, we have a lot of things going on that the public doesn't necessarily, didn't necessarily know about so well and wouldn't necessarily have agreed to if you'd actually talked to them, had an informed discussion about it and said, okay, you know, this is the balance we want. And I think that's, to me in the end, it is about balance. And adding more cameras, certainly having them on 24/7, is not the kind of community I want to be in. And I don't always have a choice. And at least here in Brookline, we have the opportunity to come and say, you know, does this really make sense? I mean, even if you want to talk about, you know, what happened, again, I heard the tail end of, people don't like to talk about what happened in the case with, you know, the red truck. My understanding is from reading, and again, I can't say because I'm only given the information. The only information I have, the only information you have, are the numbers we get and the data we get from police, but that there are pictures of that on other cameras. There are other cameras in town that the police can use. They may not be as efficient, but you know what, that's part of the balance equation in this, that there are other cameras around that aren't interconnected, that are much more difficult to be connected, that do catch things when they need that sort of support. And the other thing I want to point out, because, you know, there have been, I've seen the slide shows, and I haven't been to all of them, just one recent camera Oversight Committee meeting where there was a lot of data, a lot of numbers. It could have been this, this traffic accident, this, you know, assault, this missing person. You put out a dragnet for information, you're going to catch something. You'll catch the most, you know, highest citizen, you're going to catch stuff. So the numbers are there. If you look at the 76, you know, quote unquote, missed opportunities in the last five and a half months, at least for up to the Camera Oversight Committee meeting, a full third of them, you know, were traffic crashes. I'm not sure that's a great balance to turn them on during the day when a third of them are traffic crashes. So, you know, thinking about what we're really getting and what we're compromising. So there's so much I can say, so many arguments I've heard that, you know, why we should keep them up, look, we're being tracked anyway, my Apple device does this. Those are things you can opt out of. There are a lot of false analogies out there that aren't the same as what it gets down to. Even our nice little, very workable government in Brookline, it's still, there's still government cameras. And, you know, as soon as the Department of Homeland Security or some higher power says to you, Brookline, you took these cameras, you have them, we want that data, we need that data, you won't say no. You may not even have the legal authority to say no at the time. So, you know, I think it's really something to think about. And I think the main thing, loud and clear, you know, I think a lot of people, if you ask them, what do you think of cameras? Great, they think of the bombing. If you talk to them a little bit more about it, if it's a little less than a passing comment and you start to inform and have a discussion, everybody seems to slow down, at least those I've spoken with. So I think that's something to think of too. You know, knee-jerk reaction seems great, helps the police, you know, we all want to be the good guy. But there's something more to that. It's a much deeper issue, which I'm sure you appreciate. And I think the police appreciate it, the Oversight Committee appreciates it. But I really, I think the cameras, if they don't come down, I just don't want to see them on on the day. I don't want to live in a place where there are cameras everywhere watching. We know they don't make us more safe. They certainly don't make me feel better about what's going on, you know, that we feel the need, we have to have that. And I hope you seriously consider, you know, everything that everybody's had to say tonight opposed to the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think the chief would like to, oh, is there someone else? One more? Okay, come on. Yeah?
I'm Alan Cohen, I live on Highland Road. I'm also a cert volunteer, and I am here to support the cameras in place. Life is not the way it was, you know. I'm almost 60 and things are not the same way that they were, you know, 29 years ago. But we are tracked. I have a transponder in my car. That will not be an optional thing if you want to go over the bridge. I, you know, have an iPad, I have a phone, I allow location devices. I think it's an important tool. It's, I don't want to repeat what everybody said, but it's a very, very important tool for the police department. I'd like to see it in place.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Hi, I'm Bill McGroarty, I'm your Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Brookline. But I also do the emergency management planning for the town, including writing the evacuation plan. And one of the things I heard in this article, and I heard it last week when I went to the Advisory Committee, was removing the cameras. I know it doesn't seem like a likely event, but a few months ago, the Boston Marathon having a bombing didn't seem like a likely event either. If Boston had to evacuate for any reason, it's going to be a nightmare. Trust me, I try to get out of here every night at 5:00 and it's a nightmare. Everybody's leaving, it's going to be worse. And those cameras are going to be a very important tool. So to actually remove them physically would be a terrible idea. We need them just to try to monitor and get a grasp of what's going to be almost an impossible situation. And the gentleman said, why record? How many of you watch TV and said, did you see that? Well, if you have a DVR, you can go back and see what you just saw, because you may not have got a good grasp of it. So there's a reason right there to have a DVR. I don't know how long you want to store it, but when you're trying to control what's going to be a really chaotic situation, those cameras are a tool, and you need every tool you've got in that situation. So from the hat of the planner for the Emergency Management Team, I asked you to keep the cameras, because if there ever was an evacuation or any kind of need to go down that road, they're going to be very important. Putting on my Veterans Agent hat, I work with a lot of veterans who suffer trauma. Most of them are military trauma. Some of my veterans are from sexual assault. And I know this camera stopped two people who raped a woman. Didn't stop them from raping that woman, but it got them off the street before they could rape another woman. My veterans that have suffered that trauma, they carry that with them for the rest of their lives. The animals that raped that woman got 20 years. But at least the veterans I've dealt with, they carry that trauma for the rest of their life, and it colors their life in really adverse ways. And you talk about violation of civil rights. And if those cameras managed to stop one or two rapes before, they got these guys before they could do it again, then it was worth doing. The third thing that I heard at the meeting was a lot of people talked about, they trusted the integrity of the Brookline Police Department and they trusted the integrity of Police Chief O'Leary, and they should. I've never met a man with more honor than Chief O'Leary. But they didn't trust the National Security Agency and the government, and I understand that. As an old soldier, I spent the last few years of the Cold War on the East German border, and I got to see some of the surveillance capabilities of our country. And that was 20 years ago, and I only saw a fraction. So I think it's really naive to believe that the National Security Agency needs traffic control cameras in Brookline to figure out if they want to watch somebody, they're going to watch them, it doesn't really matter whether you have those cameras or not. So I think that's the other thing you look at. If they're looking at someone, I'm sure they can. I don't know what they do, but it'd be really naive to believe that they need those cameras to do it. Because I've seen things that amazed me, and that was 20 years ago. It's gotten better since then. So I just wanted to bring that up. Please don't get rid of the cameras, because it will screw up my plan, I'll have to rewrite a new one. Trust me, you need them. I can't get out of here at 5:00 if my life depended on it. And for the other things, think about it, because I have three daughters, I have three grandchildren, and some of you have met them, Mighty Quinn and Gavin the Terrible. If they were on Beacon Street and one of them disappeared suddenly, I'd want every camera there if I could find those kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGroarty. Okay, one more. Come forward.
My name is Barbara Hebert, I'm in Precinct 7, and I would just like to speak in favor of the cameras. And I heard a comment that, you know, having the cameras on and seeing traffic accidents and things like that, you know, seemed sort of useless. But I actually feel that if people have traffic accidents, that having the cameras and being able to figure things out and who is at fault makes a big difference to people, that if their insurance rates go up, that's a huge difference to individuals. Along with other things, I think that they make our neighborhoods more secure. I feel better knowing the cameras are there, and I hope you'll keep them.
Okay, now, chief.
I had a lot of remarks prepared, because you know how I feel about the value of the cameras. I'm going to try to scale it down a little bit, because I know a lot of people have said something, but I think it's important to remember that we first obtained these cameras in 2009. And everybody is linking what we did with those cameras to the federal government, but that is all, the money that we used to purchase those cameras was really set in motion back in 2001, when the bombing happened in the Trade Center. They turned around the federal government and looked at different regions of the country to try to determine the risk of terrorist attack in different areas of the country. And they looked at the city of Boston and the surrounding communities. City of Boston and the surrounding communities, we designated a high-risk area, and we became one of the UASI communities, the Urban Area Security Initiative. And what that does and how that is governed, each community that is part of that region, of which Brookline is one of nine communities, which include the city of Boston, we each have one representative. That representative sits on a committee that is called the Jurisdictional Point of Contact, the J-Park, and they decide how they're going to best protect the community and the people that are living in it. One of the earliest decisions we made was to try to look for the proper amount of cameras and install the cameras in different areas. Cameras were installed in different phases. The first phase was to protect Boston Harbor. We protected the harbor just because of the number of people that are around there, the institutions that border the harbor, the fact that the LNG tanker comes into the harbor on several occasions, and we thought that was a great place to start, which we did. The second phase was to take a look at the surrounding communities, of which Brookline was one of them. What likely impacts could Brookline have if something happened within the inner city of Boston? And we looked at it as being, it impacted on the evacuation of people leaving the city. We then took a look at some areas around us, and we saw that we were a real conduit both to and from the medical community down Longwood. So with that, we asked for, and we were given, 12 cameras to install along the evacuation routes. Right now, we're talking about 11 cameras, because we gave one to the city of Boston because it is, in its location in Cleveland Circle, is in the city of Boston. We took a look at the intersections, we thought, we picked the ones that were in major thoroughfares, and we put the cameras up there. We took it a step further, we posted every one of the intersections that have the cameras, so that people know that cameras are in operation in those intersections. We took a look at the original purpose, which was in fact, to help evacuations out of the city and into and around the Longwood Medical Area. But we also always said that there were other advantages that we would get from having the cameras. We knew that there'd be side effects that would help us resolve crimes, solve crimes, prevent crimes, and catch the people that are responsible for preying on people in our community. We also thought that we could use the cameras for event management, for assistance during major storms, major events such as the marathon, and would help us in criminal investigations and accident investigations. We knew we had all those advantages with the cameras in the areas that we had, and we knew one thing we didn't have that we keep hearing, including tonight, that they are accounting for widespread surveillance of the Town of Brookline. While it's only 11 cameras, they only cover major intersections, it is not widespread But before we even went and went ahead with these cameras, when we placed them up on the poles, we brought it to you, the Board of Selectmen, with this plan, with a proposal, and we talked about the variety of issues that would come to fore based on the cameras. The board scheduled public hearings. The board wanted us to develop a policy. They wanted us to do a lot of other things. And let me tell you a little bit about what we did before we even put the cameras up on the poles. We did make up a very restrictive policy that holds all of our officers accountable for the use of the system. We have a specific and equally restrictive retention period, as you heard, 14 days for this footage, unless it is used for evidence of a crime, in which we follow our evidence policy, and submit it to our evidence room. We have a committee that's made up of four Brookline residents that we meet with and report to twice a year. We submit this report to the committee, and after that, it goes in front of the Board of Selectmen twice a year, that keeps a complete tally of what we use the cameras for. We put the report that we do on our department's website for the community and anyone who wants to look at it to view. All of the offices and all of our dispatches have been trained in the use of the policy and the use of the cameras, and they have signed an acknowledgement that they understand what is written in the policy and what's required of them. And another step towards transparency, we took them on and we put it up in the lobby of our police department, the front lobby. People can go in there and they can see in real time what we see on the cameras on the 11 intersections in town. Once we had all those things in place, we installed the cameras. Contrary to some of the things that we hear and we see that I can interpret as the wording of the resolution, we designed the system differently. We designed it as follows. The images from our 11 cameras are stored on-site in the Brookline Public Safety Building. No other community, nor the federal government, has access to our cameras or their footage unless we authorize them to do so. This ability to do this is covered under the policy. We do open the cameras to other events, to others for certain events such as the marathon, various walks such as the Walk for Hunger, and at those times when the images may help in criminal investigations that are occurring in their jurisdictions. Our camera images are not sent to the Department of Homeland Security, they're not sent to the Fusion Center, and they're not sent to the NSA. My experience with these cameras has shaped My experience with these cameras has shaped an opinion different from the proposed resolution. I happen to think the cameras have been very valuable to us in preventing crime. There are many examples that show the effectiveness of crime and apprehending criminals, exonerating suspects, determining fault at crashes, managing events, investigating crimes in years, now investigating terrorism on our doorstep. There's a lot of talk about these cameras having no role in the prevention of crime. There's also a lot of talk about Brookline having a crime rate. Well, having a low crime rate. Well, I believe that there is a major role that the cameras play in the prevention of crime. I also believe that in order to keep our crime rate low, we have to look at very many options, explore those options, and make them all work together as one to keep our crime rate where it is. I think our crime rate should be even lower. Right now, we're 10% below where we were last year at this time, which was one of our lowest years in recorded memory. 35 years that I've been on the job, I don't remember our crime rate being as low as it has in the last four years. And to come here before you and say that we're now 10% even lower than that, that's great. But you know, it's not good enough. I think we should be doing more to get our crime rate down even more. And I do want to touch on a couple of things that these cameras have helped us with. That are actual cases. And you've heard mention of it tonight about the abduction in rape in Coolidge Corner, which everybody has heard about. We got the leads on that case from the camera in Coolidge Corner. That camera, if you remember, took pictures of that truck stalking that woman. And we took the pictures of that truck to several repair shops, car dealerships, and we got people to tell us what we were looking for. Then we went public with it. And it wasn't within 24 hours, we were in the driveway of the person who was operating that truck that night. Within four days, we apprehended a second suspect. And you want to talk about prevention? They admitted their guilt and they're serving more than 20 years in state prison. No trial. The woman didn't have to go through a trial to get her abductors put away, so she doesn't have to worry about them. There've been several cases of OUI, which is a traffic offense in some people's minds, but it's more than that. It's a danger to everybody on the road. Several OUIs have been assisted through, operating under the influence of alcohol arrests, have been assisted through the use of the cameras. If you can take a look at a car coming across the intersection of Beacon Street and Harvard Street, turn left against the no-left turn sign and start operating down the trolley tracks of Beacon Street, there's something wrong with that person. And it's not just that they can't see. It's something that's causing them not to see, which is probably alcohol at 2:00 in the morning. One thing that we have in our community is the fear of crime. Last year, when we were having a series of armed robberies in the BU area, I was asked to come to a community meeting that had close to 100, if not more than 100, people. In my 18 years as Police Chief, I've never been to a community meeting around crime that has more than 100 people at it. And they were there in the devotion school library to talk about what happened up there. And we were able to report to them the arrests made in three different groups of armed robberies and stabbings that took place in the neighborhood. But fear of crime is also added to by people spreading rumors, telling lies, and the cameras can help us straighten that out. Couple of years ago, when the cameras were first up at about 9:30, 10:30 in the morning, we had a man that was known to us leave court, go down Brookline Village, claimed that he got robbed by two individuals. The area that he said he got robbed was in the area of Washington Street and High Street, which has a camera. But it also has a lot of senior citizens down there. A lot of them sit on the wall, a lot of them walking around, they're coming up to the village. And if this were to get out, I think there'd be concern about walking there, especially at that time of the morning. When that subject came and reported his crime, we went to the camera. The camera showed him walking through the village, having a cigarette, having absolutely no interaction with anybody else. Faced with that footage, he recanted his story. No robbery took place. Just recently, I received an email from a town meeting member. Town meeting member said to me, asked me to look into a matter that had happened, allegedly happened in Coolidge Corner. It happened about 1:20 in the morning. A subject had left a friend of hers homes. It's a boyfriend of a woman in the house, walked up to Coolidge Corner to go to the bank at the intersection of Harvard and Beacon, and was set upon and robbed by three individuals. Individuals allegedly fled down Longwood Ave. He flagged down a Brookline police cruiser, told the Brookline officer in the cruiser what had happened. The cruiser went down Brookline Ave, went down Longwood Ave, never returned. We never had a report of it. That subject went home and told his girlfriend what happened. We get the email from the, I get the email from the town meeting member at about 10:30 in the morning, wanting to know what happened and what's going on in Coolidge Corner that man's walking down the street and getting robbed. I walked down the hall to detectives, signed the case, the case got assigned. Within an hour, we had the video footage from our camera in Coolidge Corner and we had contact made with the subject, the complainant. Complainant came into the station and he was told about the video. The video showed the subject all right. So the subject walking across Beacon Street, going into the bank, coming back out, sitting on a bench there, and then getting up and leaving. Never did he get confronted by anybody. Never did he get robbed. Never was a police cruiser flagged down and told that an armed robbery took place and did nothing about it. That camera reduced, I think, a lot of fear in that crime, and that's a perfect example of value of cameras, because had that robbery been taken to the press and spread around, that was just in the time that we had resolved all those ones up around BU. Add this to the mix and we're back to square one. To talk a little bit about those cameras in BU and the value of cameras and the value of using everything at your disposal to keep Brookline a safe place, we do in fact have a lot of private cameras in Brookline. We do have a good relationship with the community members, with the businesses, and when something does happen, we do seek out their assistance. We ask them to provide us with their footage to help us solve our crimes. Everyone has been very cooperative with us. That's not a reason to take down the 11 cameras that are on the intersections. That's a reason to keep them back up, because people see the value of cameras. Last year, as you remember, we had three individuals set upon a group of BU students at St. Paul and Egmont Street, and they robbed them at gunpoint and took off at 5:00 in the afternoon. A week later, they came back. They went down Thatcher Street in the back of Dexter Park and they robbed an individual and took off running. We were able to get video footage from the robbery, from the camera at Dexter Park. We took that video and we put it out to the networks. And within less, within 24 hours, a little bit less, we had the first subject of the robbery be brought in, turning himself in with his sister. That eventually led to two arrests the next day. All three subjects taken off the street, all three subjects gone to court, three subjects either held or released and with GPS monitoring. I think that also went a long way to preventing further crimes. Because if you're three young individuals and you're into town and you're preying on people, and you come back, one week, you come back the next week, you're going to come back to a third week unless you get caught. And they got caught. Then we had three women, well after midnight, walking to Dexter Park on St. Paul Street. They got robbed by two individuals who fled back towards Commonwealth Ave. They went into the housing property. They were seen on video going down a walkway. Within 10 minutes, they came out of that walkway accompanied by a woman. The woman was identified as a resident of the housing. Within a matter of days, we had them identified. In a matter of weeks, we had them arrested. And they are still in jail awaiting trial. The third time was a man walking down the street, 9:20 at night, on St. Paul Street, I mean, on Pleasant Street, almost to Brown Street. He got set upon by two individuals who were waiting at a house, at the corner there. They didn't just rob him, they stabbed him and they beat him up, they knocked him to the ground, and they took off running. What they did is they got on the transit, they got on the trolley. We had pictures of them running through Dexter Park, one of them. We knew they headed towards Carm Ave. We went to the T the next day and we got the pictures. Beautiful pictures of them high-fiving each other in the train station, because they were so proud of what they did. They had no remorse for what they did to that individual. Through a lot of other things, that person got, both of those persons got arrested the following day by our detectives over, coming out of their homes in the city of Boston. They're both held in jail, they're both in custody, they're not back over here preying on any more people. That's crime prevention. Doing it that quickly, getting them off the street, reducing the fear of crime, and having people here live lives the way they should live them. This most recent case over in the Coolidge Corner Library, of three children getting preyed on by a Level 3 sex offender, we got his picture from the camera in the library. Chuck Flaherty, the library director, I think he really appreciates those cameras. There's been several cases that we've been able to solve by having usage of the footage that he has in the lobbies coming into his camera, coming into his library. That attack on those, that exposure that they did to those three kids, one of them was seven years old. They don't have to go through that, they're not supposed to go through that at that age, at all. No one's supposed to go through that, no matter what your age. Cameras helped us do it. So I think that private cameras throughout the town really do enhance us. I think that's not a reason to take them down. I think that it's a reason to use them all as a way to keep Brookline safe, and I think that's what we do. I think it's really wrong to right now to shut those cameras off and take them down. I think we've shown that they not only help keep Brookline safer, they help keep our crime rate down, they make people feel safer in town, and I think it's just not right, it's not the right thing to do. You take them down, you take them down 24 hours a day, you take them down during the marathon, it would be the only community, we'll be a community adjacent to the city of Boston that doesn't have cameras mounted on the street during the marathon. What's the sense of that? We saw the value of cameras on April 15th of this year. They helped get those kids in custody, those people in custody, the bombers, the terrorists, get them off the street and restore some sense of safety to the residents of the city. And I encourage you to say, the residents of Brookline as well. So I hope you take a lot of consideration of it and see the value that these cameras have done. As has been said before by Mr. Palmbom, there have been no reports of any abuse. I think that we handle it extremely well. I think that there's a lot of advantages to it, and I think there's a lot of advantages to having our cameras up and our cameras to be running, and I hope you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Selectmen Goldstein?
Quick question for the Chief before, Chief, before you sit down. I heard one of the petitioners referred to our camera system as networked and another person said that they're connected. Our system is not networked or connected in any sense, is it?
We can, we can turn, if we want, which we do, we allow the city of Boston during the marathon to access our cameras. They can get them, it's a thing that they can get turned on, turned off at our control. We're the ones that have to let them look at it, and that's an agreeable thing that we have during events that are going to impact both of our communities.
But nobody has the automatic right to tap into our video streamer in that sense, right?
Our system, the way we designed it and built it, is it comes right towards, to the Brookline Public Safety Building and is controlled by us. The only way that they get into the system to look at it is when we turn the cameras on and let them do it. And we've only done it during major events.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members before the Chief? Or the Chief? No?
I have one comment for, I want to note for the record, that I've gotten a number of emails on this subject and they're overwhelmingly in favor of keeping the cameras.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I think, all right, we're not taking a vote on this tonight, so, but we will schedule one in the next two or three weeks. That said, the next before us is two warrant articles on which we might take a vote. I don't know if the petitioner is still here for Article 14.
I told him and Steve that they could go home yet.
You let him go home?
Because Steve and Sundar and myself had spoken. And Steve and Sundar agree that every two years, as long as Steve is on the retirement board, that he's going to have the actuary run the unfunded liabilities different ways and that we'll report those in the financial plan annually. So Sundar spoke with him at length on, I think it was Wednesday. He feels very comfortable with that and recommends no action, which is exactly what the advisory committee did.
Very well then, just to be clear, would there be a public statement at town meeting indicating that is the explanation for the no action?
Yes.
And we could, I think, certainly put that statement in our items.
Yeah, put it in our write-ups?
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, any questions for Mr. Cronin on this?
No, I will just say that I'm happy they've come to an agreement. I couldn't have voted for the warrant article the way it was, because I thought there were too many conflicts with what we have to do under various applicable laws and regulations. But I'm all in favor of more information, so I think this is a good resolution.
Okay.
And I'd move no action.
Do you want to move? Yeah, all right. We have a motion for no action on Article 14. All in favor of no action, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Binka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then the final item is Article 15. Petitioner, you want to make any comments?
Well, I've been in conversation with Commissioner Bennett, and he's out of town now, but he's going to explain to me in detail, using the details of the one case that I truly do understand. And he's going to run that, those information through his new process, through his process. And if I'm satisfied that it's really a good process to have in place, I will withdraw my motion. But he's out of town now, he'll be back beginning of next week.
Well, then I'd suggest we hold this until she gets a chance to talk with him.
We can hold the vote until you have a chance to get your, have your conversation with Commissioner Bennett.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Yep, all right, very good. Then that's the final item and therefore it is the conclusion of the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 8.